September 4th, 2024, Pender County Planning Board Meeting. I'm gonna begin with a roll call. Mr. Jordan, I am present.
Can you turn up the volume, please?
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna begin with a roll call. Mr. Jordan, I am present. Mr. Buchanan.
Present.
Mr. Bowden. Uh, we're getting some feedback. Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowden. Mr. Pitts.
Present.
Mr. Techie.
Present.
Mr. Grunfest. And Ms. Moska.
Present.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board Meeting for Pender County. We serve as an appointed board by the county commissioners to make recommendations and decisions concerning specific land use applications. We have four cases tonight on the agenda to be heard. Before we begin, it is important for everyone to understand some facts related to this meeting. There is an imposed time limitation for all public hearing comments, which is limited to three minutes individually, or five minutes if you are representing a group. Applicants and/or their representatives are excluded from any time limitation so that they may have adequate time to present their request. The county attorney will keep time for each comment. Comments should be limited to only those issues concerning whether the rezon text amendment or master plan application should be recommended favorably or unfavorably. Cases that are heard by this board are guided through the adopted comprehensive plan and the unified development ordinance. The purpose of the hearing is to gather information so that we can make a decision that is fair to the applicant, neighbors, and community, and respects the procedures and standards established in the unified development ordinance and the statutes of North Carolina. Certain mutually agreed upon conditions may be imposed on master development plans and conditional rezonings to offset or mitigate any potential impacts a specific proposed use may have. Before we get started, are there any board members who stand to directly benefit financially from any decision that is made tonight?
No.
No. No. Okay, if not, we will continue with the public hearings. If you would, please stand for a, and bow your head for a brief invocation, and remain standing, and Mr. Pitts will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, we come before you this evening with humble hearts and open minds, asking that you will give us the wisdom so that we may make the decisions that will be pleasing to the current and future residents of Pender County. We ask this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, I am entertaining a motion to adopt the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, however, I'd like to make an amendment to that agenda. Uh, it's my understanding from our staff that, I believe, case...
It's Andrew D. D. D.
I got it. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda, uh, that is at case 8.5. Is that correct, Daniel?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Uh, the applicant, I believe, has requested a continuance to that rezoning case. Uh, I make a, uh, a motion to adopt the agenda in its current form, however, removing 8.5, a continuance, to the next meeting date, um, which we can discuss after adoption of the agenda.
Could you turn the volume up, please?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Daniel, can you repeat that for the...
Yes, yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, the, the board just amended the agenda to move up the item that is last to first, as the applicant is requesting that case be continued. So the board just amended the agenda to move that case up, uh, so that the applicant may request the continuance, and we can move on with the hearings that are gonna be this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm entertaining a motion to adopt the minutes from last month's meeting.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
You wanna knock out the next meeting date now?
Uh, yes, if you, uh, we would like to break away from what is normal, and we will go ahead and set up a time for the next month's meeting date and location.
Yes, sir, October 1st is the first Tuesday of the month in scheduled, uh, standard scheduled meeting date.
What date is that, I'm sorry?
Tuesday, October 1st.
Okay.
We will have at least one case on the agenda, a case that we presumably will continue this evening, um, and there may be one other case on the agenda as well. Um, so we're looking at potentially two cases, and the board had discussed a workshop. That would be a good opportunity to do the workshop if the board is so inclined.
I'll make a motion, um, that our next meeting date be on October 1st in Burgal, with a workshop at 6:00 PM and the public hearings at 7:00 PM.
I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Mr. Thurman? Are there any signups for public comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I will be calling the signups this evening. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's name, I will do my best. Also, I may be Googling your address if I can't read the writing, and I don't judge, I have the worst handwriting in the world, so I'm not doing that, but just in case you see somebody Googled your address, it may have been me trying to figure out the correct name. So, just so you know that. And also, this for public comment is general public comment, not for any of the items that are on for public hearing tonight. So if you signed up to speak to a particular item, we'll need to carry you over from this list to the, to the list for that particular public hearing. Um, also, we now have a system that runs down to three minutes with lights, so you'll have some indication, uh, that the time is running. If, uh, and you can, it's there, and also on the podium, you'll see the lights, uh, that, that give you an indication that your time is close to expiring or is expired. Uh, first sign up, Susan Christie.
Um, yes, when you come forward, please state your name and your address.
Susan Christie, 37 Oakwood Loop, Hampstead.
Uh, bring the microphone up a little closer.
Is this any better?
I believe so.
Okay. Good evening, board. I once again stand before you with sincere concerns for the future of Hampstead. I have three main points I'd like the committee to consider. First, when I was here last, I questioned if any studies had been done regarding evacuation times for all, every Hampstead resident if there was a sudden emergency. An example I gave was a Cat 1 hurricane unexpectedly upgraded to a Cat 4 less than 12 hours from shore. I was alarmed to learn no studies have been done. Article 3, Section 160D-301B, one of the general statutes states, "The planning board is to conduct ongoing related research, data collection, mapping, and analysis." Anyone who has recently driven on Highway 17 rightfully questioned Pender County's monumental failings regarding the ongoing development and its impact to our infrastructure. Citizens are left wondering if this is a system, um, symptom of a complete and utter lack of understanding of the research and analysis done, or purposeful disregard for the data. Either way, the citizens overwhelmingly want this indiscriminate development to come to an immediate halt. Second, in the statute I referenced earlier, B2 states that the planning board is to facilitate and coordinate citizen engagement and participation in the planning, uh, process. With the exception of those within 500-foot proximity of a proposed build, most property owners receive no notice of pending development or approvals. Yet those approvals affect all of us. They affect every commuter, taxpayer, and especially parents with school-aged children. This lack of notice and citizen engagement is unacceptable. At a minimum, notices should be sent to every property owner within a school district. Finally, it has been brought to my attention that the board has approved numerous large committees, or communities in Hampstead with only a single ABRAS, going against our emergency management standards. Why is the board favoring special exemptions given from Raleigh over our own standards? These exemptions put the lives of our citizens in jeopardy and need to stop. In conclusion, I ask you to start fighting for this community. I respectfully request you creatively use every tool at your discretion to protect the interests of the citizens. I implore you to use your positions to stand against developers who seek to exploit our community, and I politely remind you of your fundamental duty of advocating for the people of Pender County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Judith Madison. I live in Tops of Greens.
What's your address, ma'am?
178 Champion Drive.
Thank you.
In Tops of Greens. Uh, my concern is, when you were talking earlier, you said that you follow the comprehensive plan and the United Development Ordinance. The UDO is, to my understanding, not being followed as it should be. I think some of the issues that were just addressed could have been avoided had you actually followed the, uh, the UDO. Your first thing is to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of Pender County. Clearly, we don't feel that that's being done in Hampstead. Um, you're supposed to secure our safety, minimize public and private impacts from fire, panic, floods, hurricanes, again, what was just being spoken to. Um, preserve the overall quality of life, obviously, we don't feel that way. Protect the character of established residential neighborhoods, that's not taken care of. Um, and it goes on and on, so if you're, and this is for staff who's recommending these things to the commissioners, I know that you're crossing all the i's, dotting all the t's, all that stuff is going on. I understand that the zoning restricts you to a certain amount of what you're able to do, but you have control over rezoning, you have control over screening, you have control over how much you go ahead and allow to happen in terms of density, you have control over clear cutting. So while you might not be able to tell this guy he can't put a car wash in there because he can, or a storage unit, or whatever, you can tell him it doesn't have to be ugly. You can tell him it has to be safe to get on and off of 17. You can tell him that he has to screen it. You can tell him you can't go in and just knock down all the trees that have spent 100 years growing here. So if you follow the UDO in the beginning, when it first starts happening, I think we could probably alleviate some of the problems and the things that people are complaining about. Thank you.
Thank you. Charlie Rowan?
Uh, I changed my mind, everything's been covered, and I have nothing more to add.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Brian Lynch?
I mistake this night, man, I need to speak about hospital.
Okay. Is that it? Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Okay, all right, we will begin. Daniel?
Yes, sir, the, the first item on the agenda, rezon 2024-72, just for the record, has been withdrawn. The next item on the agenda, rezon 2024-69, the applicant and his representative are here to request a continuance.
Uh, good evening, board. Uh, my name is Branch Smith. I'm at 205 Sierra Drive in Wilmington, North Carolina. I'm representing Mr. Farnell Singleton, uh, on the boat, covered boat storage item. We'd just like to postpone it to next meeting, our attorney's not here. We've, we're waiting on one piece of information on the building, um, to change out a slide. Um, so that's basically it, we just wanted to push it, push it off 30 more days.
Just to be clear, this is the case regarding the boat storage on 17 outside of White Bridge Community?
Yes.
Okay, I wanna make sure the audience knows that, if they're here to discuss that. Do we have any signups for that, Trey?
Um, sorry, which, I was trying to figure out somebody's name, I apologize. Which, which item number is that?
69.
Daniel, which? Uh, I believe only the, the representative of the applicant's the only sign up we have, I'm sorry, that was...
Make a motion to continue that to the October meeting.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, who, who made the motion and who seconded it, just for the record? And Mr. Pitts, second.
Daniel and Mr. Pitts.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. I'll be presenting the next case on the agenda. Feel free to interrupt me at any point if, if you can't hear me, okay? So the, the first case on the agenda is rezon 2024-75, it's a conditional zoning map amendment application. The applicant is Equitas Law Partners, and the owner of the property is Hawthorne Headwaters Apartments LLC. The request is to add 84 apartment units across three buildings to the Hawthorne at Headwaters Development, and incorporate the single-family development and multifamily development onsite into one conditional zoning district. Now, I just wanna remind the board and the audience this evening that there are two projects on this site that have already been approved. The presentation that I've prepared tonight and, uh, the applicant's proposal is to revise those approvals to add 84 apartment units and combine the project into one conditional zoning district. The two projects that are approved are not up for discussion tonight. If the board makes a recommendation to deny, and the, and the Board of Commissioners ultimately denies, it doesn't have any bearing on the project that's under construction right now. As shown on the map, uh, excuse me, as shown on the slide is a vicinity map to give the board, uh, an idea of where this project is located. So to the north and south of the site is Deerfield Drive and Hughes Road, and then it's bordered on the east and west by Highway 17 and Creekview Drive. So the zoning map shows that this property in this site has two different zoning designations. The property closest to Highway 17 is zoned PD, planned development, and that's where the commercial and multifamily development is located. The property further east is zoned residential mixed, conditional district four, and that's the RMCD4. That's where 49 single-family homes. The aerial map provides a little bit more of a breakdown, so the orange is where the commercial, uh, component of the development is proposed, the blue is where the apartments are being constructed, and the red is where the single-family homes are under construction. I have some photos of the site for the board, and after this photo, I'm gonna show a photo of the site plan to try and orient the board. It's a large site, so I just wanna orient the board to where the photo was taken and what it's showing. So in this photo, my back is the Highway 17, and this faces the apartments. If you've driven on 17 recently, you've probably seen this. In the next photo, uh, the red star is roughly where I'm standing when I took this photo, and the red arrow is in the direction of the photo. This is the site plan that the applicant has submitted. The three proposed apartment buildings and 84 units, um, are shown here, and the photo is what this area looks like as of last week. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to breeze through that. The next photo was taken not far from where that first, or where that second photo was taken, but it's looking towards the 49 single-family homes. As you can see, they are under construction. The next photo is taken from Deerfield Drive, looking south towards a three-way intersection with the, um, newly named Breakwater Way, which is the entrance to the single-family portion of the development. And then the last photo is taken from Breakwater Way, looking east towards the intersection of Creekview Drive and Deerfield. I'm happy to go back to any of those photos if the board would like, but I'll move along to a quick overview of the proposal. As I said, it's, uh, 84 apartment units, excuse me, across three buildings in this Buildings one through seven and the associated amenities are already under construction. The commercial out parcels that front Highway 17 have not been developed to date. So conditional zoning districts have a different mechanism of calculating density than any other zoning district in the county. So conditional zoning districts get their density from the future land use map. And what it, what a calculation produces is a maximum number of dwelling units. So this property has two future land use categories on it. Regional mixed use, which is the property that's closest to 17, and then coastal residential, which is the property where the single-family homes are. The regional mixed use, future land use category calls for a maximum density of 15 dwelling units an acre for multifamily development, and coastal residential calls for a maximum of three dwelling units an acre. That results in a maximum unit count on the site of 408 units. The applicant is proposing 307 units. Now, what the board might be more familiar with is density calculations, a breakdown of how many units per acre are permitted on the site. There are two ways to calculate this. Traditionally, the county uses a net density calculation, so we subtract areas like right-of-way, open space, and non-residential development, and then we divide the total number of units by that remaining space, and that produces a net density calculation. So on the screen here, you also have a gross density calculation, which is a simpler calculation that factors the entire acreage of the site and the total number of units proposed, and divides the total number of units by the total acreage of the site. So the gross density for the entire development is 7.3 units an acre. The net density for the entire development is 13.2 units an acre. Again, this project has already been approved, a component of this project has already been approved, and that traffic has already been accounted for through a traffic impact analysis. And what the chart on the screen shows is the currently approved project's traffic generation data, and then with the revision, what the difference will be in traffic. Now, these numbers assume a full build-out condition, which is the entirety of the apartment units occupied, the entirety of the single-family homes occupied, and all of the commercial development built out and occupied. So in total, you would be looking at a total trip difference, an increase in 394 trips per day, 37 in the AM peak hour, and 42 in the PM peak hour. Now, the table at the bottom of the screen is traditionally what we show to the board during rezonings. This is the annual average daily traffic count that is provided by the WMPO and DOT, and as you can see, the planned capacity for Highway 17 is 37,232 vehicles per day. They're looking at 49,862 vehicles per day travel that road, and that number is as of 2023. So the best available data is that Highway 17 is at 134% of its capacity. One thing to note is the previous site plan approval associated with the multifamily and commercial development accounted for 172 mitigation trees where the three proposed apartment buildings are located, or proposed to be located. If the applicant, uh, if the applicant's proposal is approved, these mitigation trees will be, will have to be moved elsewhere on the site. In discussions with the applicant, the majority of them will be moved to the single-family development component of the site. During the technical review of the application, Pender County Schools provided information about their current enrollment and capacity data, and as you can see, the subject property would, uh, affect three schools, Topsail Annandale Elementary, Topsail Middle, and Topsail High School. Each of those schools is already over capacity, and I do want to note to the board that the Board of Education recently passed a resolution noting that, and noting that even when the K-38 facility in Hampstead is built, the school system will still be above capacity. So again, this map was shown earlier. The site is split between two future land use categories, regional mixed use and coastal residential. And this slide shows some of the desired and inappropriate uses in each of those future land use categories. So regional mixed use, a desired use is, uh, employment centers, commercial, retail, multifamily residential, and inappropriate uses include medium and low-density, density single-family uses, storage facilities, and industrial uses. In coastal residential, single-family dwellings are the desired use, along with recreation parks and open space, and then inappropriate uses include multifamily development, attached single-family development, commercial office and institutional development, and industrial development. So staff is recommending denial of the proposal. The infrastructure required to support the increased residential development, namely schools, is not available at this time. The proposal also conflicts with one objective and two policies in the comprehensive plan, that's objective 4.6, policy 5.1C and 5.1D. Also on the screen is the planned consistency statement. The board has the option to use this when making a motion. The applicant does have a representative here this evening, Mr. Sam Potter, and I'm happy to answer any questions should the board have them.
Mr. Adams, is it your understanding of the reason to include the single-family portion within this overall project is for the trees only, or for also for increased density calculation?
Uh, my response would be nothing but speculation. I think that might be a question for the applicant.
Are there any more questions for staff at this time? Mr. Techie, do you have any questions for staff? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, my name is Samuel Potter, I'm an attorney from Wilmington. I represent the applicant, Headwaters at Hawthorne at Headwaters. I represent the applicant, Headwaters at Hawthorne at Headwaters Apartments. You all are familiar with this project. It's been in front of well, some of you are familiar with this project as it's been in front of you numerous times in the past. The reason that we're in front of you today is because the project, when it was presented several years ago, and the project when it was presented today, complies with almost every single aspect of the first woman who spoke this evening. It complies with the future land use plan. It complies with the density requirements of the comprehensive plan. It is exactly what the UDO and the comprehensive plan recommend for this site. It's commercial along Highway seventeen. It's transitioning from commercial through multifamily, higher-density apartments to multifamily as you push east from Highway seventeen. Back in 2021, when this project or an iteration of this project was denied, it was denied primarily because of the schools, and that is the same reason that planning staff is recommending denial tonight. It's not because of really anything other than that. Daniel, Mr. Adams, might take an issue with that on the traffic issue, but as Mr. Klink Scales, Tim Klink Scales, who's our project engineer, will explain, there are proposed improvements that will come with this development, both new collector streets that are currently being constructed, as well as a lighted traffic signal on Highway seventeen to aid with the traffic issues. So we're here tonight because we check all the boxes. This is about schools, and we have Mr. Michael Buckland from the Evolve Companies to speak to that. He's got some demographic data. To take a step back, what if you've read the schools, the school board's resolution, it makes sort of a blanket statement that for every dwelling unit, there is point three children, and that's what they're basing their calculation off of. Mr. Buckland, who has some real-life experience with Evolve and Hawthorne and companies having multiple apartment complexes in this community, has real-life data from the types of communities as opposed to these sort of broad statements. So if Mr. Buckland would come up and speak to that, I would appreciate it. And Mr. Buchanan, I will get your question answered about the trees and the density.
Michael Buckland with Evolve, with a developer builder for this project. So for the school's point, we have three properties that are currently under management within ten to fifteen minutes from here. We have Stevens Point. There's a hundred and ninety-two units there, and there's less than ten children under eighteen. Hawthorne at the Bend, there's two hundred and twenty-eight units. There's less than ten children under eighteen. Hawthorne at Smith Creek, three hundred and eighteen units, less than five children under eighteen. So based on that math, an additional eighty-four units would be no more than three to five children to the school system.
Please let the gentleman present his case, and you'll have your time to speak if you've signed up. Thank you. Will you please continue?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Klink Scales, could you, I'm sorry, could you come up and speak about the traffic?
Good evening. Ronald Stevenson with DRMMP, five eight zero eight, Farrington Place in Raleigh. And as was mentioned, the traffic, there's some traffic data that you you saw earlier about the increase in the number of trips. Those, just for perspective, that's about one trip every two minutes in the morning and about one trip every minute and a half or so in the afternoon is the increase we're talking about. And, you know, traffic study's been done for the project, and I think one of the things I do wanna point out is that there's a, the traffic study's been reviewed and approved, and there are some improvements that are required as part of the development. One of those being a traffic signal at US seventeen. And I thought it may be worth mentioning how the signal or how that process works just for a moment. But the, even though as part of the traffic study, a traffic signal has been approved to be installed there, the DOT will not typically allow a signal to go in until the traffic is there at the intersection, and it'll be primarily the turning traffic, you know, from the side street on the seventeen. So, you know, I do wanna point out that at such time that the traffic is there at the intersection, DOT has agreed to allow a signal to be installed there. And so, you know, we need, we would need the traffic, traffic volumes there in order to allow the signal to go in at that location. But in addition to the signal, there are turn lane improvements that are required to help get the turning traffic off of seventeen and off of the off of the roadways and into the site safely. Now, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions from staff to the, Mr. Stevenson at this time? All right. Thank you.
Mr. Buchanan, to answer your question, I'm happy to bring somebody up from the engineering team if you'd like to hear from them. But both of the sites as they exist separately have available extra density. So it's not to combine density, it's to move the trees from the island and kind of across the site. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to bring up whoever can answer them, but that's our presentation.
Mr. Buchanan, may I follow up on that, your question briefly?
Certainly.
Uh, you said they're gonna get moved into the single-family?
Not all of them, but they're gonna be spread throughout the site.
All right. Who's gonna own the land that the trees are relocated to?
The applicant, well, the applicant or their successors.
So, I mean, are they gonna be sold to single-family home owners?
The plan is not for that right now. It's to be a rental, it's in the application, Mr. Thurman, that this is.
Right, but I'm just.
It's to be a single-family rental community.
Okay, but anyway, well.
So will we all be under one legal description or one, it's not fee simple?
Is it all under one? Well, I think Daniel may be able to correct me if I'm, sorry, Mr. Adams may be able to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's a subdivision map for the single-family. It's not all one parcel with lots of single-family houses on it. I think that's what you're asking. I think technically it's single lots that are subdivided. And I can certainly ask Mr. Buckland to come up, but I know the intention is for this to be a rental community, both the single-family as well as the apartments.
And the reason for the question is if I own a lot, unless there's some restriction, I can go cut all the trees down. It's like, we had developments that would back up to wetlands, and people would gradually fill them in to expand their backyard, and they were single-family owners, and they were entitled to do that, because they weren't filling in enough to trigger a core permit individually. As a group, that might have been a different question, so that was part of the reason for asking that.
To address Mr. Thurman's concern there, I'm sure we could agree to a restrictive covenant or something to that effect.
Could you speak up just a little?
I'm sorry. To address Mr. Thurman's concern, I'm sure we could agree to a restrictive covenant on the single-family lots regarding trees. If that was a concern of the of the board, we could.
That would be a concern, I think.
Sure. I'd have to talk to my client about it, but that seems like a common sense resolution. If we're moving significant trees to other parcels, and obviously the board's concerned about keeping trees in place, if Mr. Thurman's concern is, well, we sell one of the residential lots and somebody comes along and cuts down the spruce tree or the live oak.
Absolutely.
Trees would be in open space, not on the lots.
Okay, can you go back to the the map with the pointer and show us specifically where those trees would be relocated to?
Sure. Actually, Mr. Sorillo is here. He's with Paramount Engineering as well, and he's a landscape architect, and he's the guy that's responsible for making all this work, so he's probably the better person to speak to.
Good evening, Gordon. Jim Sorillo, Paramount Engineering, one twenty-two Cinema Drive in Wilmington. Let's see here. So, kinda reviewing the last bit of discussion here, all trees would be located in common areas in the single-family area. I understand your question, where you're coming from with the idea that sometimes remediation trees get on single-family lots, and then it needs to go in the covenants, that those cannot be removed, but, you know, that's not the situation here for two reasons. One, the rear property is for rentals, and two, the location of the trees. Let's see if I can find a slide.
Try going the other way.
It's on your desk.
Try going the other way. I'm not sure that I have a.
Do you have the overall site plan from the?
I don't. You can try using the.
And that's the apartment site, that's where they're coming from, and so.
Keep going back a little bit.
Okay, here we go. Laser on here?
Yeah.
So, you know, for the single-family area, a lot of the trees that we are mitigating were removed from this area. So the idea is to bring as many of those trees back, really to re-vegetate some of the, you know, the edges of the remaining forested area. So the trees would be placed in common areas along the edges primarily of the remaining natural areas. So along the buffers, the trees will not be used to satisfy the buffer requirements, but the buffers are also a good place for these trees to go and re-vegetate that wooded edge. So I explained it for you, everything here, kinda see, really, they're really placed along the perimeter. They're available for street trees, but also, again, all in common areas.
And you're saying you use those, use trees in the buffer? Is that, that's what you're saying? Now, what? Yes, go ahead.
So these trees could not be counted towards the buffer planting requirement. So, you know, for every hundred feet of buffer, let's say you need four canopy trees, those trees are planted independently. You may end up with seven trees in that hundred feet, three of which may be part of the mitigation trees, but the four that are being used to meet the buffer standard do not come from the back of mitigation trees.
Okay. What about, do you have any concern about too much congestion as far as trees? You know, certain types of trees require a certain area of, to grow.
Correct. You know, the, you know, the existing area where trees were removed from was more, was more natural. And so if you're familiar with, you know, the interior of a wooded area, a lot of the lower vegetation does not survive as the trees, you know, create an overall canopy. And in those kind of situations, they can handle a little bit of, you know, tighter spacing than you might see, you know, a row of trees along the road. Either way, the, some of the layouts we've done in order to get the trees planted in that area show, you know, spacing no, no less than thirteen, thirteen feet apart, which is plenty of water oak, the primary tree that will be replaced.
I understand.
And they'll do fine with that spacing.
Do you have a proposed layout for this?
We had, we had a conceptual one that was just something we were looking at. It was, I think, turned it into Daniel, but it was more reference to show that it was possible to do it than it was the specific proposal for the relocation.
So you're saying that you do not have a specific proposal this evening for that?
No, that was not part of the.
Okay. All right. Do we have any more questions for Mrs. Sorillo?
Out of the hundred and seventy-two, how many do you foresee moving? The hundred and seventy-two that are proposed in the existing open space?
That are within that area, you know, probably somewhere between a hundred and twenty, a hundred and forty. Because within the area where, you know, previously approved plans show them where the new buildings and parking are proposed, there will be other required trees in that area. There's be some parking lot trees that are necessary, and some other screening planting. So there's certainly enough trees to go around, and the site will look heavily vegetated. We'd rather be able, you know, we would certainly prefer to include new, new trees, you know, within the project, like the living, you know, site part of the project so that people can enjoy the trees, you know, and it just creates a better product than just kinda jamming them, you know, in the back somewhere. That's not the intention.
All right. Are there any more questions for the, Mr. Sorillo? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any more that you would like to share with us at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have sign-ups?
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman. Doug Holstein?
Good evening. My name is Doug Holstein. I live at three one three Creek Creek Drive, Hampstead, North Carolina, and I'm asking the planning board to vote to deny the request. Let me start with the recent storm, Tropical Storm Debbie. We've got, fortunately, we've got this map up here. You see where the red arrow is, and you see the wetlands. Tropical, Tropical Storm Debbie is not a fifty-year storm, and Paramount always tells us that they plan for a fifty-year storm. Anyway, Tropical Storm Debbie went through the wetlands, and where the arrow and the star is, the neighbors in there were deluged under about four to five inches of runoff. Did not give us a lot of confidence in the Paramount's planning for Stormwater runoff. It destroyed the, well, it didn't destroy, but it damaged the intersection of Breakwater, Creekview, and Deerfield down by where that arrow is. When we, we had a meeting, an informal meeting with the applicant, with the neighbors, and they told us that they were gonna do eighty-four apartments, so we asked them, for how many kids was that going to involve? It wasn't until just now that we heard that it's gonna be three to five kids. We applied a coefficient of one kid per apartment, which was grossly over- guessed it, but we asked the question, well, where are these kids going to play? You know, 'cause now, instead of having a passive green area, you've got three additional buildings and parking lots. Where are they gonna play? And the answer was kind of flippant. They said, oh, they're gonna be at the pool. Well, all the pools are closing right now. And the other answer was, oh, they'll play, they'll be at the putt-putt court that we have as part of the amenities. And so that didn't endear us to the applicant or Paramount when they, when they gave us that answer. The, the other information that we got at that meeting was the traffic light and the traffic, the, the turning lanes and the intersection. They don't intend to put that traffic light or intersection until it's completely built out. Well, if you notice on the maps that they showed us tonight, there's no work at all being done on the three acre, three one-acre lots for the retail. So it's not until they have a complete build-out. So now we're playing catch-up. They're going to bring all the people in, all the renters in those apartments, and those people are gonna look for ways to exit or enter into that apartment complex, and they're gonna be going out Deerfield Drive, or they're gonna be going out Center Drive to Washington Acres Traffic Light, both of which are at capacity. Now, we can't, we can't get out of Deerfield Drive right now. We can't make a left-hand turn. Everybody's turning right, going into food line, getting to the traffic light, and then making a left. So they don't, they don't care. And that's gonna be my final point.
Thank you, Mr. Holstein.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm, I'm representing, I'm president of the Deerfield Homeowners, Community Association, so I get five minutes, not three.
Yes, sir.
You didn't say that, sir.
But we did.
I know, I know. I apologize, but can I have my. I apologize, but can I have my actual two minutes?
I would make that...
Yes, continue.
All right, all right. So, my final point is, they don't care about our kids. They don't care about the schools. They don't compare, they don't care about the, the quality of the water in Mill Creek. They don't care about stormwater runoff. They don't care about the traffic. They just don't care. What I'm hoping, and what the people in Deerfield are hoping, that you guys, that you all care. And so, we're, we are requesting that you deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd also like to stay, to thank the Pender County staff for denial. We appreciate that, and that's what I would like to request from you all is also a denial. From the application for Hawthorne in order to rezone, we were here two years ago in 2021...
Ms. Brandenburg, did you state your...
I did not. I'm so sorry. 201 Creekview Drive.
All right, thank you.
I apologize.
Continue, please.
So, the 2021 request for rezoning was denied for one conflicting objective and two policies that has not changed in this year's request. It's also being denied on one objective and two policies, and they stay the same. I'd like to let you know that one of the reasons why people are moving to Hampstead and to Pender County this side is because our schools are so great. I wish I had a nickel for every time I hear someone from Onslow County or New Hanover County moving to Pender County because we have better schools. Because even though we're overcrowded, we're not as overcrowded as the other two communities. So, what, the school that's being proposed to open in 2027, I'd like to actually quote from, sorry, the Pender County School Report that states, in the 2023 report, it was, a new draft was promoted. It's saying that we're expecting K-13 students in five years to be over 13,000 students with an annual increase of 460 students per year. And for just 24, 25, the forecast is 427 students increase. On page 10 of this report, the forecast states that Topsol Schools are currently at 118% overcrowding, and that they will be overcrowded by 150% in five years. And in quotation marks after that, it says, "The new K-8 school that will open in 2027, two and a half years from now, it will help with the crowding, but further relief is needed." And then, on page 11 on the table, "The new school will house 750 kids. If it opens in 2026, 2027, there will be 893 kids going into that school. It only holds 750." So, in two and a half years, it will already be over by 143 kids. If it doesn't open until 2027, 2028, the need will be for 1,003 kids. That will be an overage of 253 kids. I also have stormwater pictures of the flooding on a rain event in July of 25th, 2024, that I'd like you to see, which Doug referenced, because stormwater runoff is not being treated on-site. I only have four copies, but I can't pass it forward. If I'm allowed, I didn't know if I was allowed.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Brandenburg. I believe we, we did see those pictures earlier. Miss copy.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, thank you.
Daniel Meehan?
I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that last name?
Mee, Meehan, M-E-E-H-A-N is what I believe it is.
That's correct. Good evening. I also, after hearing everything I heard tonight...
Please state your name and your address, sir.
Okay, I heard you saying it. So, Daniel Meehan, 230 Camelot Way in Hampstead. Daniel Me, there it goes. Daniel Meehan, 230 Camelot Way in Hampstead.
All right.
After hearing everything I heard here tonight, I only have one point to make, follow-up on Mr. Holstein's point. They take away those 174 trees and put them on areas already designated as open space. What we get, instead of open space, percolation from rainwater and such goes into the ground, we get more of that flooding, and we get more runoff. So, they're basically taking trees and moving them to where trees really are already and giving us parking lots and roofs, plus all the additional traffic. That's pretty much what I have to say, I thank you.
All right.
Please deny the application.
Thank you.
Hi. Brett Weaver, I live at 505 Center Drive in Hampstead. I'm approximately five to six houses down Center Drive from where the 500 feet were. Feel like, once again, most of the points that I brought with me tonight have maybe already been touched upon. So, I'm a little less formal than some of the people that have presented, but I wanted to share some personal experiences that I've had. One, which is a picture of my house from the storm in July, which is also stormwater that has flooded my yard to the point that it is still sopping wet. I can't go in my yard because I'm scared that there will be snakes in there. I am half stagnant water still sitting in my yard at this point. You're all very welcome to come to my house and up my driveway and, and look and smell. Most of the grass in this area is now dead. It also transferred over into my neighbor's yard, and they have been in the area longer than I have, and they said that it's the worst that they have ever seen it. I also want to share that as a parent of two children in the school district, that I daily receive multiple phone calls about busing transportation that is up to two hours late in the morning and every afternoon. Happy to present any of these to you as well. While I feel like three to five new students seems very low, I do have a graph that shows that all three of these schools that would be effective are currently in the red very much. So, even if it was only three to five students, we're already surpassing what we should be at. The state, the North Carolina Department of Education says that the recommended class size for sixth-grade students is 24. Topsol Middle School is currently at 36 sixth-grade students. Dr. Obita stated last year at a band performance that I attended for my son, that the high school as of last year was 550 students over capacity. I'm not sure where you guys are from, but where I'm from, that was more than the entire high school that I graduated from, is just over capacity at only the high school. My personal experience has been that they tried to graduate my son a year early without my permission and without him matching the criteria to graduate. I feel like they just are trying so hard, they're just so inundated with students in the building. I will also want to point out that there has been an unprecedented amount of turnover with staff in the school district. I think it was somewhere near 20% of Topsol Middle School staff resigned over the summer. I think the entire high school administration is new this year, and some of them haven't even started yet. My son alone...
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Peacock. I live at 123 Deerfield Drive. I just want to remind the board that, you know, the western portion, or the eastern portion of this development does have conditions, one of which was the buffers, which said that there are going to be, "Natural vegetation within the external buffer, buffers shall be preserved to the greatest extent possible." I have witnessed the whole clear cutting of that lot. There was no preservation of any natural vegetation. Also, there's supposed to be a study, a significant study, I believe is what it states here, tree survey to be conducted per Section 8.1.3 of the Pender County Unified Development Ordinance. I've not personally seen that. I don't know if that was ever done. So, I would, you know, suggest maybe look into that as far as the tree survey. The other thing is, all construction traffic shall be, shall enter the subject properties from the proposed Collector Street Reference in Condition 3, which was that the road that bisects this unified plan that cuts from Hughes Road to Deerfield Road, and that no construction shall use Deerfield Road as their entrance. Well, I hate to tell you that that happened during the whole clear cutting of the lots of that, I think both. So, we were having massive dump trucks come through. We've almost lost my mailbox due to a equipment trailer that came through this, one of the side roads called Alberry, formerly Blueberry Road. So, you know, it looks like maybe half of these, roughly half of these conditions were broken and will probably continue to be broken. I'm not sure if that's a condition of the zoning or just a condition of getting everything built so then, then they can finally adhere to the conditions. So, which is it? Is it upfront, they can, they do the conditions, or later they meet the conditions after it's finalized and met? So, it's a little facetious, I'm sorry, but I'm, I'm, live on the corner here, I've seen it daily. So, the other thing is, is I am in denial, if you haven't told, I'm in denial of this, this unified development plan. The, I want to tell you, I witnessed some of those stormwater coming down the Breakwater Road and exiting the collector drain, almost like a reverse waterfall. So, rather than water going into the collector, it was coming out of the collector and then eroding the other side of Deerfield Creekview Drive. So, it seems to be funneling all the water onto Deerfield Creekview Intersection. The condition in the, for the rezoning condition was number five here, "Stormwater control mechanism shall, shall ensure all stormwater runoff flows to internal stretch and collect, collection system." Meaning, you know, there's not supposed to be a reverse waterfall coming into Creekview and Deerfield Drive.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peacock.
I'm Mickey Tanbooz. I live at 531 North Line Drive, Hampstead, North Carolina, 28443 in Deerfield. And further to what Mrs. Brandenburg, thank you so much, Mrs. Brandenburg said about the schools, I would like to speak as a teacher who is trying to help as much as I can. I have 33 years of teaching experience, and studies have shown repeatedly that any overcrowding of students has a detrimental effect on student achievement. We're already behind long, it's been five years since the COVID pandemic started, and we've been playing catch-up for the last five years. And it's not getting better at any rate. And we need to absolutely pay close attention to what is happening with our children. It's not just a short-term effect that's going to have on these children. I can't even imagine, even without adding the additional 84 units, the children who are going to come from the single-family homes and the other units that are there, there's going to be so many children and the overcrowding that is already taking place, it's unconscionable to try to add more children to the school system when the children are not getting a quality education that they deserve. And I don't know, maybe some of you have grandchildren or, or children in the school systems, but if it was your child, I'm sure that you would be fighting for your children. And I appreciate if you would consider the children when you vote for a denial. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Shala Korf. I live at 116 Center Drive. I handed you some papers earlier on, which I thank you for taking. Those were the photos that Pat Brandenburg had taken, and she had given them to the developer and builder at the informational that we had at Hampstead Women's Club. And it also included emails, text messages from the schools to the parents. And I'd like to read a few of those off right now, if you don't mind. So, on Monday, August 26th, first day of school, at 2:04 PM, Topsol Middle School families, students who ride Bus 251 will be an hour late today. We currently do not have a driver for Bus 270 and do not foresee as having any drivers available. Please start making arrangements now to have your student picked up from school. Wednesday, August 28th, for Topsol Annandale and Topsol Middle School families, students riding 251 and 324 will be picked up an hour and 15 minutes by Bus 252 Thursday morning. Students riding by, should be bus, but it says by. 251 will be picked up about an hour and 15 minutes late by Bus 252. Bus 270 does not have a driver on Wednesday afternoon, and it will be two hours late on Thursday morning. This continues all the way through what I have for last night. Topsol Middle School, for Wednesday morning and afternoon, Bus 277 will be an hour and 15 minutes late. Students will be picked up by Bus 214. Bus 277 will be an hour and 20 minutes late Wednesday afternoon. Bus 270 will be about two hours late Wednesday morning and picked up by the first available My recommendation is please deny this rezoning request, because if it is approved, they can change their density proposal, whatever they want, to their 408 units, and we already can't support what we have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Brian Lynch. I live at 442 East Creekview Drive in Deerfield Subdivision. I would like to speak and Dan and Doug, Doug's and everybody else that spoke tonight, they all seem to be 100% denial. And I also want to rise to say, I want the denial as well. I have, only thing I've heard tonight, that the proposal includes changing the movement of 120-some trees to a different location. If that is a reason for accepting this movement, it's a pretty, pretty lame reason, because we have all sorts of drainage problems other people have mentioned. So, and the last thing is, the, I'm sure the original denial also included the assumption that the Boardwalk Way was going to be extended to 17, which was included. Now, we have learned that that's not going to happen, and the commercial development is done. So, until that is done, we should extend the denial. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
My name's Chris Fox. I live at one eighteen Circle Drive. Um, I just want to reiterate what most everybody else that lives in this community has said tonight, that we, um, appreciate the denial, um, on behalf of the staff. And I would like to request a denial, uh, as well. Um, contrary to Mr. Potter here, I think that our biggest issue is quality of life. Um, you know, I have two kids. I want them to grow up in the Hampstead that was and, um, has been becoming the past ten years. You know, we've had growth, but it's really just seemed like it has exploded so much the past few years that, um, you know, I would just like to see some consideration again for what the future holds for this area. Um, uh, like most everyone has said, the school overcrowding and the buses are just such a huge issue. Um, I would imagine that that's being taken into consideration, but I want to make sure that, um, it has been, that you guys have requested input because I think the last time this was denied was specifically because the school system said we can't handle anymore. So I just want to make sure that we're getting input from them again. Um, and then, um, you know, again, like I said, I think that what it, it seems to be, to look like from people of this community is that the developers don't care about even their own patrons' quality of life. Um, just trying to cram as many units as possible. And I know that all the boxes are checked for, um, what is allowed for development. But again, we want to make this community, um, a great place to live in and to grow up in that has green space and infrastructure to handle the people that are already here so that we can welcome newcomers, um, and have a good community for them. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Labrie?
Good evening. My name is Laura Labrie. I live at five two seven North Line Drive and DoorDash can't seem to find me. So good luck Googling me. Um, I know that the planning board, based on the comments and the, the input that you've already received tonight, you're aware of the, the concerns that I have. But I do, I did want to come up and make sure that you understand, there are so many of us that feel this way about this development, um, the concerns. And I'm going to talk about what we'll get more of. So we'll get more traffic on roads that are already congested, unsafe and miserable to deal with. We're getting, um, a bypass. There's two, my understanding is there's two phases. There, there's twenty twenty-six, one will be completed in twenty thirty, the second will be completed. These bypasses have been, um, are being constructed to improve safety and relieve congestion, implying that our roads are currently unsafe and over congested. Um, if I remember correctly, the one additional traffic light that they talked about installing as part of this development will not be installed until the commercial pieces are in. And they, those commercial pieces are not being built because they don't have any, um, anybody to rent them, the retail space. So there won't be any traffic light for quite a while, apparently. Uh, we'll get more pressure on our social infrastructure. Everybody has talked about the schools. The pressure will be mainly on the K through twelve schools. The school board study says that we're already over capacity. We're not going to be back under capacity, even with the brand new school, the K, K through eight school that's going to be built and, um, opening in fall of twenty twenty-seven. The buses are late. I know you've heard that. I've experienced that myself. Not only are the buses an hour or two hours late, there are children sitting on the buses in the aisles. They're not on seats anymore. The buses are crowded. I mean, this is a recipe for disaster. We have roads that we've called unsafe and we're putting kids on buses that are late in a hurry and not even in a seat. More water drainage problems. That's what we'll get more of too. More safety problems from the water that doesn't have anywhere to go because apparently it does not seem like they've, um, I'm sure they planned within the statutes and within the rules, but it's not handling the water. What's going, and it's not even done. They're not even done building. They're not even done paving with what they have approved already, already issues. Three hundred trees. I have two hundred trees on my property. Three hundred trees is nothing. So I'm confident that these, you're aware of these issues, like I said, and they're being addressed. They're being discussed. And I respectfully ask that the current request for the additional apartments and parking be denied until our community infrastructure has a chance to catch up to the growth that we've already experienced.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Labrie.
Thank you.
Erin Schmidt?
Hi, I'm Erin Schmidt. I live at four oh three Majestic Oak Strive in Hampstead. And I want to talk to you as a, a resident who came here for the quality of life that Hampstead had to offer as a small town, which is not the experience we're having now. I am on the board at the Topsail Athletic Booster at the high school. We have gone from a three A school, soon to be a seven A school, and we have one A facilities. And we spend a lot of our time trying to raise money to give these kids what they deserve as a high school athlete. That's not to mention the children that are in band or in, um, in, in the drama clubs. There's just no funding for the capacity that we're at. So you've heard from all of these people how our schools are overcrowded. You know that already. I'm not telling you something you don't know. But when Pender County is not offering any money for the programs in the high school and people have to work to try to support them, it becomes an issue. And our, so not only are they getting the education, the lack of education because of the overcrowding, they're not getting the athletic or, uh, supplemental experience that they deserve. Um, I did want to make a, a comment about the amount of kids that, um, the gentleman said were in those apartment buildings. I know of two families that have children in Sparrow's Bend. One has three children. One has two children. That's five children. I know that we can't stop development in the area, but the zonings were put in place for a reason. And I see no reason to go ahead and rezone these areas to change what the original structure was meant to be. So I request that you deny the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Felix?
Can you repeat that?
Jean Felix?
Good evening. My name is Jean Felix. I live at one twenty-six Dogwood Lane. And I moved here three years ago from Long Island. And if you want to talk about capacity, uh, I, I lived it. And I came here because I saw a quality of life for the people of my community. And now what I'm seeing, now I wasn't aware of the apartments being built when I first moved here. And then I, I've, I see them being grown every day. But where are we going to put all of the cars on the roads? We have roads, every road that we have is a dead end. If you get caught on seventeen in an accident, there's no place to go. So if you're going to continue to build, then you have to provide roads for us to drive on or to at least avoid, you know, the command of traffic that we're experiencing. I sat on it in my car one day, dead standstill, and somebody just plowed right into me. Because they just, you know, everybody's in a rush to get where they're trying to go in the morning or in the evening, but there's no roads for us to drive on. So this gentleman here, I really appreciate everything that you said today. And we appreciate all of the work that the staff is doing. And we really, we hope that we all support the denial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Brew?
My name is Larry Brew. I live at one three four Deerfield Drive in Hampstead, which is right in the middle of Breakwater Drive, uh, Deerfield Drive and Creekview Intersection. Um, the condition for approval, number five, storm water control mechanism shall ensure all storm water runoff flows to internal streets and collection system. The system has been put, that has been put in place right now on, uh, what is being called Breakwater Drive. Doesn't work. Somebody from the planning board should go onsite and take a look at this. During tropical storm Debbie, water overflowed the storm drains, took out a corner of Deerfield Drive. And now, weeks later, these drains are still half full, creating breeding, breeding grounds for mosquitoes. The water is not flowing into the retention ponds as it is designed to do. And this is before they've even paved parking lots and driveways. And who knows what's going to happen after all that's done. So they pushed dirt around for well over a year up there, putting in infrastructures for apart, for the apartment buildings. My question is, why are they only now asking to put in more buildings? Has the infrastructure for these additional buildings already been put in place? If not, how long is it going to take to put in all this infrastructure that, for the buildings they're requesting? We've had to endure constant noise from this construction project for over two years. First, just before Christmas twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, they drove logging trucks up and down the dirt road in blatant violation of Article nine, uh, of the, uh, conditions that says, uh, proposed Collector Street referenced in, uh, condition number three and not the intersection of Deerfield Drive shall be used for consortium traffic. Then, just after New Year's, they burned a huge pile of timber and spewed smoke and ash all over the houses along Deerfield Drive and Hughes Road. We were forced to buy wildfire-rated air purifiers just so we could stay in our house. This became nearly intolerable when the earth-moving equipment began to work. It was extremely difficult for us to work from home with the constant high-pitched screeching from the backup alarms, sometimes as early as six AM. Then, when building started, of course, there was constant hammering and sawing of construction that continues to this day. Why is there not a bill of rights for property owners who have had their lives invaded by developers that requires developers to respect existing neighborhoods instead of forcing us to just suck it up? No, we do not need any more units added to this interminably long construction project.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer.
I don't know why you would approve anything from this company that has no regard at all of it. My name is Bob Jerabek. I live at one eighteen Deerfield Drive. I live on Wetlands, first of all. This company has no regard for any of its neighbors at all. And that's us, all these people you see out here today. They dis, uh, they weren't going to be putting heavy-duty trucks on Deerfield Drive. I still see them today. They weren't going to do a lot of things. I have a picture here of the Wetlands that they recently dug up. And you're talking about planting trees. One morning I wake up to hear the buzzing of, of a saw right behind my house where they're cutting down tree after tree. And then a, uh, steam shovel comes along to drag them out. And like the gentleman just said, all you hear is beep, beep, beep behind it. I think this project ought to be denied. This project has been changed over and over and over again since it was first mentioned. And I, I'm not going to blame this planning board, but I'll blame previous planning boards that had no regard at all for planning this, for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
Mr. Chairman, I had something. I, I left out the last slide of my presentation, which was the proposed conditions of approval. Ms. Davis, do you mind just? So there were, on the previous approval, previous approvals, there were nineteen conditions of approval. So if the board were to make a motion to approve, staff is recommending that all nineteen of those conditions be included as part of this approval, as well as the four on the screen. Um, the, the first two are familiar. Those are on just about every conditional rezoning application that you see. The third one is that a five-foot sidewalk shall be installed that runs from Pathview Way to Deerfield Drive along the east side of Marisol Parkway. And the fourth one is the developers should coordinate with NCDOT on the installation of a crosswalk at the intersection of Highway seventeen and Boardwalk Way.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Um, apologies.
Was there any, a condition for storm water?
Storm water is covered in several conditions on the previous approvals.
All right. Would the applicant like to come forward and?
Before he, before he does, I've got a question for Dana. Do, do we have, uh, any stats on how many units, residential units have already been approved in this area that haven't been built out yet?
I don't have an exact number. Um, ballpark is in the multiple thousands.
So these, uh, numbers we're getting that says we're, we are already crowded in the schools, we're already crowded on the roads, do not include those units that have not been built out yet, do they?
Correct.
So if you add those thousands more, we're talking about already being two hundred, three hundred percent overcrowded for the roads and our infrastructure, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to get that point across to everybody.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Klink scales, I, I, he is a engineer with Paramount Engineering and has been responsible or the primary lead on the storm water aspect. I think we would be doing a disservice to not have him address some of the concerns that were raised, uh, both by the public. And I'm sure you all have questions for him as well. I know Mr. Buchanan had a question about, uh, storm water and Mr. Adams already. So, Mr. Klink scales.
Yes, my name is Tim Klink scales, registered engineer at Paramount Engineering. Um, you have a specific question? I mean, I have some comments to the, uh, to the comments by the, by the, uh, public. But if you have a specific question, I can answer that first or I can do that at the end?
Do that later.
Okay. So I think, um, one of the, on the storm water, um, it was stated at the community meeting that, uh, we, we were doing the fifty-year event. Um, we're actually doing the hundred-year event. I don't know if it's a condition of the original approval, but, um, we are, we are holding back the hundred-year storm on, in the site. Um, I looked at them again today and, and we are, uh, fifteen percent below the flow rate for the hundred-year event for this site. This is based on pre-development runoff. Um, we understand the, you know, the, the concern of the community about water quality. We're also in, in SA high-quality water. So we have to detain greater storm water than you would across seventeen. And we are, are handling that additional storm water. Um, for these additional units, um, it will be an increase of eight percent of impervious. It will, it will increase the impervious by approximately sixty thousand square feet. So right now on the site, there is about, about whatever, seven, let me see here, I got the number here, just to, because numbers, so we're plus or minus five, I mean, six hundred and sixty thousand square feet of impervious. And we'll be going to about seven hundred and fifteen thousand square feet of impervious. So we're increasing it by eight percent, which I understand is an increase, but it is, it is only an eight percent increase just with these units. Um, in regard to the, the open space there with the trees, um, In regard to the, the open space there with the trees, based on the spacing, the whole, that whole space would be filled with trees. So, it would be areas where trees are, but it would not necessarily be a playground for, for the community. It would be just a tree farm. And so, by spreading out the trees, we're actually having the ability to, outside of the buffer, to increase trees for the single-family neighborhood that's the existing neighbors. And also, there was a question about tree survey. Those number of trees that we've, I think it's 174, was based on the tree survey that was provided at the initial approval. Let's see, that's what we have here, just, I was trying to go through, and on the, on the traffic issues here, when they say that they do not want commercial on the piece of property, I mean, if they had a user today that would build, then they would be, they would build that traffic signal. But that's the DOT's mandate, not the developer. And so, they're openly looking for commercial out parcels, I mean, users, but at this point, they've just not come to an agreement with one. So, they're not holding back the commercial. If the DOT let them construct, they would, they would build the traffic light today, but based on the DOT's mandates, they do not meet the traffic to get that, that threshold to build the traffic light. And just to, not to, I mean, I know the developer's been kind of taken a beating, but that developer actually lobbied to the DOT because it was not going to be that red light at that, at that location. There was not going to be a red light all the way from 210 all the way down 17. That was, that was agree, that was for the, developer said he would pay for that red, that traffic signal and work with the property across the street, the Spot Festival, to provide a commercial note for the county back in the day. There was a question about Boardwalk Way, which is the, the main access that goes to 17, that is not, at this point, is not connected because the property, the project has not been opened, but it will be connected as part of, obviously, the, the main access to go on 17, which is Boardwalk Way, which is, goes to 17. So, that will also, that will be connected to the, to the site. And on the commercial and the traffic, it would be equivalent to the, just one of the out parcels, not all three. Out parcels need to be constructed to do the red light. So, it'd only be one of the three that needs to be constructed to do the red light. The, the increase in traffic is 4%, just based on the numbers that were in Daniel's report. So, that's the, there's a 4% increase in traffic with the 84 units. The last one, I will say, about impacting the wetlands, I mean, it could be, but that's, obviously, that's a core issue. There's no, in our development plan, there, we do not have impacts in the wetlands, except for a tiny amount near Deerfield that was permitted. So, I, I don't, I mean, that's not, the core of engineers and the dean has not stated to us that there's been a violation of any wetland impacts that are outside of our approved They asked about permits need to be done on this project. So, there do, there will have to be permits. At best case, we would have to, we would be nine months before we had permits, and then the construction process after that. So, this was, we'd have to go through the same process with TRC, through the county. We do have the infrastructure for the sewer. Pump station has the capacity to, to handle this additional units, and pressure test based on the new tower on 17 meets the requirements for water pressure and the storm water ponds, again. The, the meeting, the 100%, the 100-year event included this increase of, the 8% increase in impervious. I know it's kind of rapid fire, but I wanted to make sure that the ones I wrote down, I might have missed some, or any questions y'all may have as questions as well.
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that currently you're looking at 660,000 square feet of impervious surface?
That is the, that is what's on the 174 units and 49, in the, in the three commercial out parcels.
And you're looking at increasing it to 700,000?
Yes, sir. A little over 700, yes, a little over 700,000, yes, sir.
Now, impervious surface, that means water will flow through it. Is that correct?
No, no, that's, that's pervious. We're talking impervious.
Impervious, okay.
Yes, sir. If I use pervious, I'm, I'm.
Okay. No, it was my mistake. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure we had clarity there.
Yes, sir.
Do you know the acreage on the total site? Can you tell me the acreage on the total site?
I can answer that, Mr. Chairman. Based on the application that was submitted, it's roughly 42.26 acres.
Okay. All right. Are there any more questions for Mr.?
So, how is pre-development storm water runoff measured? What are the factors? Bring me through.
The factors are the tree coverage, so it depends on the condition before we did any clearing, tree conditions, soil conditions. If it's permeable soils, it is the slope of the, slope of the land, how long it takes to get from the highest point in the, in the property to the outfall of the system. And if there's any existing impervious that's on the site, which on this site, there was no existing impervious.
So, it's all done out of factors in a book? You pick what, what situation applies, and you have?
Yes, I mean, it's a, yes, a mathematical, yes, empirical, by, you know, they've done that by empirical data, not just, yes.
So, the same thing would happen with the post-development storm water runoff?
Yes.
Now, in your storm water certification, you state low impact density. So, what items are you using to satisfy?
Yes, I mean, we have.
Biofiltration, bio-retention, preserving open space is one of those items that you can. So, what are you using for the LID?
LID, we're, we're, we have level spreaders on the downstream side of the storm water ponds, which do diffuse the flow, allow it not to be a point source and have the flow coming out of the pond at a wider angle, which makes the velocity going in the wetlands lower.
So, that's considered biofiltration is, is how, is what you're satisfying?
It would be, I guess that would be considered, yes.
Okay. Because you're taking away the open space by moving all the trees. So, it's mostly biofiltration?
That would be the LID, but we, but we're storing the water in the ponds.
Right.
So, that's, I mean, that, but the, but the LID is the, is the level spreader and the diffusion, diffusion of flow going into the wetlands.
Okay. In the certification, you mentioned, where did it go? A one-year, 24-hour duration storm event. What about anything done for the 50-year storm, 30-year storm?
Yes, ma'am. The one-year storm is the amount of water quality that we have to handle. So, the state requires, and because of the location, that we can't let any runoff leave the pond. The equivalent between the pre-development one-year flow and the post-development, it's a volume. But the, but the, for flood control, we are, we are holding back equal to or less up to the 100-year event. So, I think it was more about the narrative and just speaking about, you know, LID, but on the, but on outside of LID, we're holding back up to the 100-year event.
Okay. I know I had one more question, I'm just trying to find it. Oh, the water table. What is the water table average in that area? The distance, if you start digging, what you're going to hit water on a good day?
On the, on the, on the multifamily site, I mean, I would say that it's, you know, multiple feet. In the residential, I would say it's probably two to three feet. But in the multifamily, because it's actually on a higher ridge, it's going to be significantly greater than that.
The project currently is not complete. Is the storm water system that's been installed, is that complete up to the permit that's been issued to you?
We have not done a final certification, but at this point, it is, besides us checking the contours in the pond and checking some elevations on pipe structures, to my understanding, it would be, it's very, it's, it may not be quite there, but I'd say it's very close for us to certifying the system.
The public has brought us multiple pictures of past storms, which would indicate, in their opinion, and maybe ours as well, that it's failed. Is that your opinion that there is something wrong with that system currently, and why, you know, have we seen these potential failures? I'd like to have your comment on that.
I mean, I can't speak for individual locations. All I can say is, is that, you know, I feel confident that the, you know, the, the science and mathematics that we've done meets the requirements that I've stated here at the 100-year event, and I do believe that, that over time, I believe that it will, I guess, regulate back to maybe what, what it's designed to do. I mean, again, we have a lot of factors on storms. I don't know what storm that, that, that a particular place, you know, that even Debbie in, you know, five miles has a different intensity. So, I don't know what the intensity necessarily in Hampstead at this location would, would have been considered, what kind of storm it would be. There's also Hughes Road and DOT, I mean, I think their system is undersized. I mean, we had a discussion with DOT, and we, and we actually wanted to upsize the system, and they would not let us do that under Hughes Road. It's not to put them under the bus, but it's exactly the truth, because their answer was that it will then have other effects on other properties. So, I mean, that, that is a factor in, in some issues down, down on that, on that side of the property that gets into the, into the stream. But I think a lot of that, some of that has to do with, because the DOT system on Hughes Road is, I mean, it's a 24-inch pipe under Hughes Road.
Who is the permit holder for the storm water system?
The applicant is the storm water.
So, if there is a failure in the future, in its current, its status is a byright project as it is, and there is a failure the public's concerned about, are they to contact what entity to contact? Because obviously, we don't have any authority over that storm water system once that permit is issued by the state. Who would they contact?
I mean, they would, they would contact DQ if they felt like that not all the storm waters get into the system. But the county does have some authority as it comes to the flood control. The state has no authority over flood control.
Now, you said that the science and mathematics says that storm water is where it should be, but yet I saw pictures of water standing in the streets, and you're not even built out yet. So, you're saying that the mathematics and the science is correct, and it'll work itself out. But if you start adding more to it, it's not, I don't see what's going to work itself out. It's going to get worse.
I mean, I mean, some of this also is that there are erosion control measures still in ponds. There are inlet protections in storm drains along roads that hinder water sometimes from getting into basins. And so, that, that does hinder water getting into the collection system when there's still erosion control that's, that's open for, for a project. And so, that, that really, a lot of times, could have that effect.
But when you, but when you see pipes, and you see water standing in those pipes?
Yes, sir. Well, on the standing pipes, I mean, if, the, the system is designed to have water in the pipes.
Oh, I understand that.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I mean, since some places do not, I mean, that's not.
Yeah, but I understand that. But I, when I say water in the pipes, I'm talking water where it should be going down, and it's sitting there on the road, right next to it. So, it's nothing to do with something in the way of it draining. I'm seeing, some of the pictures I saw is, there's a problem with the pipes in the storm water drain you've got now. And, and if you start adding more to it, I think you're going to have more problems.
So, Ken, it's kind of like statistics. You can take, the calculations that are done on any site are not, you don't sit there and actually collect rainwater or measure the storm water.
Oh, I understand.
So, they're doing it based upon book data, standards that were accepted. So, to your, answer to your question, Damian, they don't have any responsibility if they can show that they did the calculations based upon the standards accepted in the industry.
As long as the math and the science is right.
How many trees do I have?
They can have floods all they want to.
Contribute to this fact, or how many tree, you know, it's all a guesstimate, and it goes into a calculation. And so, if they're in a range, and they can show the calculations that they.
I understand about the engineering part of it, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
It doesn't mean it works.
Both of you, I mean, I don't, I would say the guesstimation is a little bit.
Yeah. I mean, you know.
It's not a guesstimation. I mean, people have actually done.
We can talk about.
Detailed studies at universities to determine these values.
So, on that site, when you chose specific tree coverage, you didn't sit and say there's 87% of this tree and 13% of that tree? I, I know calculations. I'm an engineer. I've done calculations.
Yes, but, but we didn't.
I understand what you put in.
But it's, it's percentage of the covers, not a specific tree. I mean, we look at Google Earth, and we determine the percentage of a site, this tree, and we base it on.
None of the variables that you're putting in are exact for that location. It's, there's assumptions made, and those, those numbers go in the calculations.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any more questions for Mr. Klink scales? All right, thank you.
You had referenced the.
I'm sorry, please state your name.
Michael Buckland with Devolve.
Okay.
You had referenced a lot of the photos that were shared, and I had received those at the neighborhood meeting as well. And after that, we went back and we did a lot of survey work at that fourth driveway. We're currently in coordination with DOT on that. There were a couple of items that they needed to see fixed in terms of how that driveway was connected. So, that is in process. So, I would say 90% of the photos that we received that were an issue are being resolved right now. So, that's one of the items. And then, too, the project is under construction. The contours of the land aren't how they're going to be all around the site, so the water's not going to be draining perfectly into the system. It's currently around the site. It's just a binder course of asphalt, so the water is hitting the curbs and not going fully into the drainage system at this point. So, until we finish out the top coat of asphalt and finish out grading work and fix the fourth driveway, the current system as it sits today is not where it's going to be when Tim goes and certifies his storm water system.
Okay, I understand, but I, I thought, sure, Mr. Klink scales said that they were really close to certification.
I would say the sites rough graded were 90% done with construction, but there's grading that still has to occur, the top coat of asphalt for the water to flow into the drainage pipes, all of that still has to be done, as well as, like I said, 90% of the issues that were raised were at the fourth driveway, which is being fixed right now.
Is your sewer infrastructure installed?
Sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Is the pump house installed?
Yes.
Okay. What is the capacity for that pump station?
I don't remember additional numbers to the, exactly, but I think we discussed before we came in a couple of years ago. I think we had, I think we, and I'm off, this is off the cuff, but I think, believe it is, that I think we had 60 additional units beyond the number of units we had before. So, I think, I think we're 20 less than what we had years ago on the, so I think we had plus or minus 80 units outside this development that could be, have silver. And goes without saying, you could also, I mean, there's capacity in the wet well, that a pump, a pluris or a developer or someone could upgrade the pumps to get more capacity as well.
So, it's currently installed?
Yes, sir.
It's designed specifically for the current project, but it could be expanded for future use?
Yes. And it does have some additional, just based on the pumping rate and the pressure out on 17. But they would not be able to, they would not be able to gravity to the system. They'd have to have, they'd have to pump to a, to the gra, a gravity manhole that's, that's, that's constructed, that Pluris will own. So, it's a, it'd be a public gravity system that they could pump to from another site.
Does Pluris have, would have access to your, basically, you're saying that Pluris not only would own and operate the pump station, but it would also own all the lines?
Yes.
So, they would have the right to expand those lines if they wanted to, regardless if you agreed to it or not. In its current state, they could expand.
That's right. That's right. We have, they have easements and all that in place to, yes.
Are there any more questions for the applicant?
Are there any more questions for the applicant? Do you have some more, Mr. Potter?
I just had some comments.
Okay.
Some cleanup here. I appreciate y'all's time. I know it's been a, a long night. A couple of things I wanted to highlight here, you know, Mr. Adams had mentioned during his presentation that the future land use plan and the comprehensive plan would allow up to 408 units for this site. And the proposal is 307. It's 101 less than what Pender County's own policy documents say it can be. With respect to the open space, which was mentioned several times as well, the open space requirement for this site, we're required to provide 9.21 acres of open space, at least half of which must be active. This is from page seven of, of Mr. Adams' staff report. The applicant is proposing 14.09 acres, so roughly 50% more than what's required. 6.98% will be active, which is roughly one and a half times, or sorry, not one and a half times, one and a half acres more than what's required. I started off our presentation by saying that, you know, this project checks all the boxes on everything except for the schools, which we have addressed. I understand the public is against this and some of the things that they've said about our client are just not true. Evolve and Hothorn are local companies. They have other projects, other apartment communities, not just in Pender County, but in New Hanover County and Onslow County and Brunswick County. I could probably go on and on and on. And their products, I think all, Mr. Buchanan is aware of them, I imagine that the rest of you are, are higher end apartment living that's mostly for young professionals and older people who have transitioned out of single family homes. It is not in their interest to have a community or a project that people don't want to pay to live in. They don't charge. These aren't $1,000 a month apartments, right? These are nice places. If you go to their projects and you look at their clubhouses and you look at the barbecue stands that they put in and the gems and the landscaping that they do, these are not your standard vinyl boxes that you used to see so much in northern New Hanover County and proposed in southern Pender County. So the idea that whether Evolve or Pedwater, I'm sorry, or Hawthorne is some carpetbagger from outside of town that wants to come here and destroy the community is just not true. They're invested in this community, tens of millions of dollars. And I, I understand that I'm making a speech that probably doesn't need to be made, but when you sit and listen to people talk about the evil intent of somebody, it, it's just not right and it's not true. And so if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Mr. Potter, I appreciate those comments. I think sometimes the public is frustrated with development next to them and may have had seen conditions that were violated, whether you have control over that as not as an applicant. I, I do believe that Evolve has many nice projects at high quality. I know people that live in them and enjoy them and have seen their work. I don't think that this body believes that Evolve is not a partner in our community. But the question is whether or not an expansion of this development is appropriate. And you may not have represented the client at the time where this body actually denied, I believe everyone here, except for maybe one, was on that body that denied that original conditional and in addition to that, denied the by right project, a majority did, which was found for us to be an error. So twice this body has denied this project and our community's feeling a lot of pain with traffic, with schools and with growth. So the, the question is whether or not there's a community benefit, you know, to this additional project. Obviously feasibility study that you've done, you've already constructed the project. So I, I'm grasping for a community benefit to understand whether or not, I'm not speaking for anyone else here and I'll respect the, the consensus of this body, but is there a community benefit that you see to this project and its expansion?
I do, and I appreciate you asking the question. I have every reason to believe that the numbers and the statistics that Mr. Buckland referred to with respect to the number of students that are actually in their units are correct. I referenced a second ago who their normal tenants are, right? These are not normally families. And if they are, they're transitioning from, you know, moving into the community while they're looking for another place to live. So you have a much reduced impact on the school system for this type of product. At the same time, you also have a piece of property that will have zero value in terms of tax value to the community, in terms of adding to the tax base and providing funds that will help build the infrastructure that we all acknowledge. Mr. Teachie, you said, and I completely understand, that we're not even talking about the thousands and thousands of, of units that have already been approved that haven't been built. Those aren't even in those numbers yet. And you said this community doesn't have the infrastructure to support that. How is that ever going to happen? How is the infrastructure ever going to get built if you don't have the revenue and tax base to support it? And so to answer your question respectfully, Mr. Buchanan, it's projects that aren't going to add a material amount to the infrastructure costs, but are going to add a material amount to the tax base to pay for future infrastructure.
I do have another question for you. You made, you made a statement that the density was lower than what the county allows, right?
Yes, sir.
Why are we here tonight? Why are we asking for rezoning if you could build those 84 units without coming to us?
I never said that we could build the units without coming to you. But as Mr. Adams said during his presentation, the type of zoning that we're asking for, the PD zoning, the density requirement is based on the future land use plan. Daniel, if I'm misstating this, please correct me. So it's, it's not by right. If we were by right, we wouldn't be standing here. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is your future land use plan says this is the...
Well, it sounded to me like you were saying where we could...
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to make sure we understand each other.
No, I would love to not state...
You couldn't build the other 84 without being approved to build the other 84. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, that's all I want to know.
Are there any more questions for the applicant? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, if we take a vote tonight, where, can you explain to the, the public if, if the buck stops here or if it goes to the county commissioners or, or where it goes from here?
Yes, sir. So members of the audience, the planning board serves as a recommending body. The board of commissioners is the ultimate decision maker. So the decision tonight by the planning board is a recommendation that we, that will be passed to the board of commissioners. If they recommend approval, the case will still be heard by the board of commissioners. If they recommend denial, the case will still be heard by the board of commissioners. So this board makes a recommendation to the board of commissioners who will make a final decision.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Appreciate that. I am entertaining a motion. Or do we need some more discussion?
Well, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Do we have...
I will have, I do have a comment to make and I'm going to let you know how I'm going to vote. But I made a, a comment here. It wasn't a promise, but it was almost like a promise. I made a, I made a comment here about a year ago that until the schools and the infrastructure in this area of the county was improved, I would not vote for an increase in density on any project. And I'm going to stand by what I told. And I'm not running for political office, but I'm going to stand by what I said back then. I, I just can't, until things are straightened out. I just don't see us, I cannot see where, part of our job is to watch out for the public interest. And I don't see where these 84 units, when we're already too many people in the school and we've got too many, we don't have enough road structure, where these 84 units are going to be in the public interest of this community. So we can, if you'd like for me to make a motion, I'll make the motion or somebody else wants to make a motion, but you know where my motion's going. So I, unless there's any other discussion, I'm going to make a motion to deny the conditional zoning map amendment and to make a finding of denial because the proposal is inconsistent with the following objectives and policies within the Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan. Said denial is reasonable and in the public interest and does not further the goals of the Pender 2.0 comprehensive land use plan because it conflicts with the following objectives and policies. Objective 4.6, policy 5.1. C, coordination with infrastructure and services, and policy 5.1. B, focused growth and development.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Teachie.
I second that motion.
All right. Ms. Moskis seconded the motion for denial. We will take a vote for denial. All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the vote of denial? Any has abstained? Okay. All right. The motion has been denied.
And to remind the audience, this case will be heard by the board of commissioners at their October 21st meeting in Virgol at 7:00 PM.
All right. Thank you. We'll give them a couple of minutes to let the crowd clear out. Do we want to take a short...
Can I make a motion to make a five minute break?
Yes.
I second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay. Got it.
Take a five minute break.
Before you, you have different buffer descriptions for that. The Board has seen these many times. But like I said, what's being proposed is consistent with what the ordinance would require. So then we have traffic. This is what we want to take a little bit more time to talk about. This was a traffic count that was provided by the engineer with the original submittal. The UDO requires a TIA or traffic impact analysis if a project generates over a thousand trips per day or a hundred trips per peak hour, AM or PM. So based on the approved scope for the project, which it basically sets the parameters for the traffic study, they did have the scope approval done by the NPO and the DOT. Based on the proposed uses, which it doesn't fully capture the potential for commercial, but just to give you a general idea, for the most part, the project could potentially generate three thousand trips per day on US Highway seventeen. And below that, you can see the current volume and capacity for this section of Highway seventeen, so a bit different from the previous case. This is a different part of Highway seventeen, mind you. The capacity for that roadway is nearly forty-four and a half thousand trips per day. This would really close that gap, right? Right now, there's about a six thousand differential. This would close that by fifty percent, which would bring this closer to having more capacity issues for road travelers. A public input meeting for this project was held in Berga on August twenty-first last month. Four community members were in attendance. This summary is provided in the Board's packet. Utilities, just to mention a couple of available utilities here. Pender County Water is available to the site. Pluris is not directly available to the site, but it is in relatively close proximity and under the developer's need. It could be extended to serve the site. Just to talk a little about a recurring theme this evening, schools. We received this comment from Pender County Schools. Based on the zero-point-three students per dwelling unit, there would potentially be an impact of approximately seventy-two students on the school system. Surf City Elementary School has a current enrollment of eight-eight-six with a capacity of seven-fifty. Surf City Middle School, current enrollment of seven-forty-four with a capacity of seven-fifty. And then Topsail High School, current enrollment of eighteen-thirty-five with a capacity of fourteen-hundred students. So now to talk a little bit about the future land use plan. So as you guys know, with the future land use plan, this established a vision set by the county several years ago to guide growth, to guide what types of growth and what densities and level of growth we want to see in what areas of the county. So as you can see on the future land use map, the majority of this part of the county, at least at this level, is low-density residential, which allows up to two units an acre or less. You can see on the corner, there's a neighborhood mixed-use. There's a little more neighborhood mixed-use down the road, which I recall can allow up to ten units an acre or so if it's townhomes, that sort of development pattern, but not multifamily. And so, just to clarify, in the low-density residential future land use category, multifamily residential uses are inappropriate, as is non-residential development. So based on the future land use category here, this project is not supported. Let's talk briefly about the current zoning of the property, because it's important to understand what rights the property owners currently have, because obviously, they are requesting new rights to do a different type of development, but it's important for the Board to see what could be done today under the current zoning. So with the current RP zoning, typically, you can do a minimum lot size of fifteen-thousand square feet, right? That's about three an acre, give or take, a little less than that. If water and sewers available and serves these lots, they can be reduced to twelve-thousand square feet. And if stormwater is designed and built to LID, Low-Impact Development Design, they can be further reduced to nine-thousand square feet. So they could potentially have nine-thousand-square-foot lots through a single-family or duplex-type development currently. However, based on Staff's estimate of what could be built here, based on the assumption that the open space and right-of-way areas would take up twenty-five percent of the site, they could do around sixty to seventy single-family homes. That is a great departure from the two-hundred-and-forty multifamily units proposed, and certainly inconsistent with the intent of the RP Residential Performance District, as well as the intent of the low-density residential future land use category. What they are proposing is more in line with the regional mixed-use future land use category, which this was one of the subjects that we talked about in the last public hearing a little while ago. So that site, the land use plan, did support a higher density. So in the future land use category, let me rephrase that. This is more in line with what they're proposing, right? Which would allow up to fifteen units per acre for multifamily and ten units per acre for a single-family development. This supports commercial, most commercial, you know, it's consistent with what their proposal is, but it's not consistent with what the map says and supports. And so another point I want to make is that this is a zoomed-out image of the future land use map in the greater Hampstead area. And you can see these larger, purple, darker-purple areas on the map. These three areas were designated with the most recent adoption of the Pender 2.0 Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan. And what do those three areas you have, or what do those three areas have in common, you may ask? The Hampstead bypass. So the Hampstead bypass will cross NC Highway two-ten here. It will cross Hoover Road here, and it will join Highway seventeen here, near Kason Drive. So the county made a clear, showed a clear intent to guide development density to areas around the Hampstead bypass, okay? And not at the subject properties. This is to accommodate future growth in appropriate areas, but the future land use plan that was adopted in twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen identified this property as low-density residential. That was the long-term vision the county had at that time. And so, there's several policies that are inconsistent with the request. Objective four-point-six, policy five-point-one(c), policy five-point-one-h, policy five-point-one-i, multifamily residential, I'll call this one out specifically. The county shall allow multifamily development in designated inappropriate areas as identified within the regional mixed-use future land use category. So this is acknowledging that we should support multifamily projects in this type of area, but not otherwise. And then you have five-point-one-v residential development, five-point-one-e compatible development, which again, the project is not consistent with its surroundings, and Staff has the position that it is incompatible with what exists or what is planned and intended with the future land use map. And then there is a policy that is consistent, multifamily residential development and infrastructure. The county shall coordinate the expansion of multifamily residential development with the availability of water and sewer infrastructure. So potentially, yes, water and sewer could serve the site, and the concept there is that if there's infrastructure, then that's where density should be. But that isn't where it has to be today. So Staff respectfully recommends denial of the proposed conditional zoning for the following reasons. The request is inconsistent with the Pender 2.0 Future Land Use Plan designation of low-density residential, and it's not compatible with the surrounding area. The request will add significant traffic to US Highway seventeen in this area that will potentially burden daily users further than the existing conditions. The request will also potentially add seventy-two students, which will potentially burden the school system in this part of the county. Furthermore, you know, currently by right, they could do around sixty to seventy single-family units. They are proposing to do two-hundred-and-forty with twelve-thousand-five-hundred square foot of commercial, which is a departure from the vision that the county established several years ago. And we are working on updating the future land use plan, and we'll certainly take a look at this corridor, but I think it's important to guide growth towards those areas under the current future land use plan until we can evaluate it, which we are working on now. But if the Board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Though I also want to mention a few standard conditions. If the Board chooses to recommend approval of this, Staff feels strongly about the removal of a gasoline station as proposed use, as well as requiring that the stormwater system be designed to meet the ten, twenty-five, and fifty-year event, as well as analyzed for the hundred-year storm event. And I'm happy to answer any questions that Staff may have.
What would the number of students-
T I A or traffic impact analysis if a project generates over a thousand trips per day or a hundred trips per peak hour, AM or PM. So based on the approved scope for the project, which it basically sets the parameters for the traffic study, they did have the scope approval done by the N P O and the D O T. Based on the proposed uses, which it doesn't fully capture the potential for commercial, but just to give you a general idea, for the most part, the project could potentially generate three thousand trips per day on U S Highway seventeen. And below that, you can see the, the, the current volume and capacity for this section of Highway seventeen, so a bit different from the previous case, this is a different part of Highway seventeen, mind you. The capacity for that roadway is nearly forty-four and a half thousand trips per day. This would really close that gap, right? Right now, there's about a six thousand differential, this would close that by fifty percent, which would bring this closer to having more capacity issues for road travelers. A public input meeting for this project was held in Berga on August twenty-first last month, four community members were in attendance. This summary is provided in the board's packet. Utilities, just to mention a couple of available utilities here, Pender County water is available to the site. Pluris is not directly available to the site, but it is in relatively close proximity and under the developer's need, it could be extended to serve the site. Just to talk a little about a recurring theme this evening, schools, we received this comment from, from Pender County Schools, based on the zero point three students per dwelling unit, there would potentially be an impact of approximately seventy-two students on the school system. Surf City Elementary School has a current enrollment of eight eighty-six with a capacity of seven fifty. Surf City Middle School, current enrollment of seven forty-four with a capacity of seven fifty, and then Topsail High School, current enrollment of eighteen thirty-five with a capacity of fourteen hundred students. So now to talk a little bit about the future land use plan. So as you guys know, with the future land use plan, this established a, a vision set by the county several years ago to guide growth, to guide what types of growth and what densities and level of growth we want to see in what areas of the county. So as you can see on the future land use map, the majority of this part of the county, at least at this level, is low-density residential, which allows up to two units an acre or less. You can see on the corner, there's a neighborhood mixed use, there's a little more neighborhood mixed use down the road, which I recall allow, can allow up to ten units an acre, so if, if it's townhomes, that sort of development pattern, but not multifamily. And so, just to clarify, in the low-density residential future land use category, multifamily residential uses are inappropriate, as are, as is non-residential development. So based on the future land use category here, this project is not supported. Let's talk briefly about the current zoning of the property, because it's important to understand what rights the property owners currently have, because obviously they are requesting new rights to do a different type of development, but it's important for the board to see what could be done today under the current zoning. So with the current R P zoning, typically you can do a minimum lot size of fifteen thousand square feet, right? That's about three an acre, give or take, a little less than that. If water and sewers available and serves these lots, they can be reduced to twelve thousand square feet. And if stormwater is designed and built to L I D, low-impact development design, they can be further reduced to nine thousand square feet. So they could potentially have nine thousand square foot lots through a single-family or duplex-type development currently. However, based on staff's estimate of what could be built here, based on the assumption that the open space and right-of-way areas would take up twenty-five percent of the site, they could do around sixty to seventy single-family homes. That is a great departure from the two hundred and forty multifamily units proposed, and certainly inconsistent with the intent of the R P residential performance district, as well as the intent of the low-density residential future land use category. What they are proposing is more in line with the regional mixed-use future land use category, which this was one of the subjects that we talked about in the last public hearing a little while ago. So that site, the land use plan, did support a, a, a higher density. So in the future land use category, let me rephrase that, this is more in line with what they're proposing, right? Which would allow up to fifteen units per acre for multifamily and ten units per acre for a single-family development. This supports commercial, most commercial, you know, it's, it's consistent with what their proposal is, but it's not consistent with what the map says and, and supports. And so another point I want to make is that this is a zoomed-out image of the future land use map in the greater Hampstead area, and you can see these larger purple, darker purple areas on the map. These three areas were designated with the most recent adoption of the Pender two-point O comprehensive future land use plan. And what do those three areas you have, or what do those three areas have in common, you may ask? The Hampstead bypass. So the Hampstead bypass will cross N C Highway two-ten here, it will cross Hoover Road here, and it will join Highway seventeen here, near Kason Drive. So the county made a clear intent, showed a clear intent to guide development density to areas around the Hampstead bypass, okay? And not at the subject properties. This is to accommodate future growth in appropriate areas, but the future land use plan that was adopted in twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen identified this property as low-density residential. That was the long-term vision the county had at that time. And so, there's several policies that are inconsistent with the request, Objecting four-point-six, Policy five-point-one-C, Policy five-point-one-H, Policy five-point-one-I, multifamily residential, I'll, I'll call this one out specifically. The county shall allow multifamily development in designated inappropriate areas as identified within the regional mixed-use future land use category. So this is acknowledging that we should support multifamily projects in this type of area, but not otherwise. And then you have five-point-one-V residential development, five-point-one-E compatible development, which again, the, the project is, is not consistent with its surroundings and staff has the position that it is incompatible with, with what exists or, or what is planned and intended with the future land use map. And then there is a policy that is consistent, multifamily residential development and infrastructure, the county shall coordinate the expansion of multifamily residential development with the availability of water and sewer infrastructure. So potentially, yes, water and sewer could serve the site, and the concept there is that if there's infrastructure, then that's where density should be, but that isn't where it has to be today. So staff respectfully recommends denial of the proposed conditional rezoning for the following reasons. The request is inconsistent with the Pender two-point-O future land use plan designation of low-density residential, and is not compatible with the surrounding area. The request will add significant traffic to U S Highway seventeen in this area that will potentially burden daily users further than the existing conditions. The request will also potentially add seventy, seventy-two students, which will potentially burden the school system in this part of the county. Furthermore, you know, currently by right, they could do around sixty to seventy single-family units, they are proposing to do two hundred and forty with twelve thousand five hundred square foot of commercial, which is a departure from the vision that the county established several years ago. And we are working on updating the future land use plan, and we'll certainly take a look at this corridor, but I think it's important to guide growth towards those areas under the current future land use plan until we can evaluate it, which we are working on now. But if the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Though I also want to mention a few conditions, standard conditions, if the board chooses to recommend approval of this, staff feels strongly about the removal of a gasoline station as proposed use, as well as requiring that the stormwater system be designed to meet the ten, twenty-five, and fifty-year event, as well as analyzed for the hundred-year storm event. And I'm happy to answer any questions that staff may have.
What would the number of students impact be with the, the by-right, uh, single-family count?
Um, let's see, point three, twenty, twenty-one students?
Is it a different calculation based on single-family versus apartments?
It's the same calculation that Pender County Schools provides, it's point three students per unit. They don't differentiate between single-family and multifamily. At least not to my knowledge. Was that correct, twenty-one? They do. So they, I'm just hearing that they do differentiate. It's less, but, but the comment they provided me was, yeah, consistent with the last project, it was that point three unit. So based on what is allowed by right today, would be around twenty-one students in comparison. And that's based on the new school com- comprehensive plan.
Now, is that, Mr. Brantley, is that going by the assumption that there is water and sewer available? Because according to my calculations, if water and sewer, if I, if I, if I understood you correctly, if there was water and sewer there, they could build up, uh, the minimum lot size, or excuse me, they could go to nine thousand square feet, which make it four-point-seven-two units per acre. Is that, is that the, the students, is that going by the four-point-seven-two, um, units per acre, or is that the, uh, the two units per acre that, that is, that is the current zoning, um, without the?
So, so the two units per acre is the future land use intent, intention, the, the by-right zoning actually allows a greater, a greater density, additional units, so that was based on what they can do today.
Right.
If they're, if they're zoned R P, they don't have to follow the future land use plan, but if a rezoning is proposed, then we'll, you know, the boards are oblig- obligated to consider it in making their decisions for any sort of land use change. So what's zoned there currently is tip, it's more so a medium-density residential.
Okay. So your calculations are going by, um, the by-right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've evaluated the by-right, because it's important for the board to differentiate what the county wants to see versus what they can do.
Okay.
Because that's, they can, they're proposing to develop about four times what they could develop currently without asking the board.
Right. I understand. Are there any more questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Mr. Brantley. Does the applicant have a presentation?
There's no presentation, but the applicant is here to speak.
Okay. Thank you, please come forward and state your name and address.
Uh, good evening, my name is Sam Potter, attorney with Equitas Law Partners in Wilmington, North Carolina. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, C K Buff Enterprises LLC. This is obviously a very different discussion than the discussion we just had concerning the Hawthorne Project in Southern Hampstead, as this project is no, is located north of Hampstead. And I had a discussion with Daniel, Mr. Adams, the other day, that I thought was relevant before I dive into this, uh, and it had to do with something that you guys are going to consider next week, and whether or not the future land use plan contemplated allowing something to happen. And a part of the code, Mr. Adams, correct me if I say this incorrectly, is, correct me if I say this incorrectly, correct me if I say this wrong, that if a project is approved that does not comply with the future land use plan, that approval automatically amends the future land use plan. Did I say that correctly, Mr. Adams?
Say it again.
So, so to say that again, if you approve a project that does not comply with the future land use plan, that automatically amends the future land use plan. So in essence, you cannot approve a project without it being consistent with the future land use plan, meaning by, by allowing it, you've amended the future land use plan also.
Yeah, okay.
So that's, that's a mouthful, I get it. Um, and, and that's really the thrust of the discussion from the applicant's standpoint at this time, which is that the future land use plan for this section of Pender County is outdated, hasn't been looked at in a significant amount of time. It doesn't take into account in a meaningful way the bypass that is getting ready to come in just to the south of this property. And speaking for my client, I know when he looked at this site and thought about its highest and best use moving forward, was that it would be commercial along seventeen. The properties immediately adjacent to it along seventeen are already commercial. That's not a change in what's there, and it makes sense for anybody that drives that corridor that the properties closest to seventeen will be commercial moving forward. And that, much like in Southern Hampstead, once you move back from the commercial development along seventeen, that the most common sense use of that property is a more dense, uh, multifamily product that would transition back again to single-family. And that the concerns about infrastructure and the future land use plan are not applicable today as they were six years ago when the future land use plan was created, the current future land use plan was created. So, you know, our belief is that this project makes common sense, while it may not comply with the future land use plan as it sits today. This is a brand-new project, so it's not one that you guys can look at and, and see that's, that's already built. We have some of the same people here today, Mr. Clink Scales. Oh, there he is, sorry, he moved. Uh, Mr. Clink Scales is the project engineer for stormwater purposes. Ryle, Ryle is here, he is the traffic engineer who's prepared to talk about traffic flow. One last thing I'll point out, uh, that Mr. Brantley pointed out, is that this project does not have roads that are underdesigned to serve this project. This project would not exceed the Highway seventeen available capacity, so we're not talking about road issues like we were with the past project. I, I know the school's issue is going to come up, um, and we're prepared to respond to that, um, as it does, but if you guys have technical questions, I would turn it over to Mr. Clink Scales to address, but that's the, the long and short of it.
Yeah, again, Tim Clink Scales, um, resident engineer for param engineering, question about water and sewer. We have Pender County utilities for water, and we have a capacity letter from Pluris that says that they will serve the site with sewer. We can either serve off seventeen, we also have an easement on the Eden's Lane where there is currently Pluris sewer, there will be a lift station on site, but it will, um, have water and sewer for the site. Stormwater-wise, we're, we're fine with that condition. The by-right condition for the county, I believe, is the twenty-five-year event and ten percent above the twenty-five-year event, so this would actually have greater stormwater coverage, um, than a by-right, um, project, and I believe, since it's not a P D, that the by-right does not even come in front of this board, if I'm correct, it just goes straight to T R C.
And one last point from, from my perspective, um, this is what I do, and I go to a lot of community meetings. We had a community meeting, we had four people that come out. I don't know if there's anybody here in opposition today, but at least the neighbors that were present for the community meeting before were broadly supportive of the project. Uh, Mr. Freeman owns the property directly in front along Highway seventeen, and I know, I spoke with him a few minutes ago, I know he wants to address the board, um, about his views on the project as well. And then, uh, the traffic engineer has one piece to add.
Good evening again, I'm going to try to back up if I can here.
Please state your name.
Uh, Ronald Stevenson with D R M P, five-eight-oh-eight, Farrington Place in Raleigh. I want to get to the traffic slide just for a second, I think it's easier to look at this. So I just want to make a couple of points about the traffic, ju- ju- just to make, make sure. So, we're i- in the process of doing the traffic impact analysis, we assume uses and trips that are what we call, what we say conservative or high, higher than what we think is actually going to go there. So we're not, we're not looking to try to cut corners on trip generation and that kind of thing, and the reason why is, we do want to make sure that any turn lanes and improvements are designed appropriately. So when we look at this commercial area in particular, if you look at the numbers, um, on that ten thousand square feet retail and the coffee shop, that's over half of the traffic is coming from that, that one small area, that, you know, of this property. That's, that's done kind of on purpose to try to study more traffic than we think is actually going to happen there, so just want to make that point. But it's the other point I want to make, that at least I, I interpreted it this way when, when I was just doing the presentation, I want to make sure I, I sort of clarify. Do the site, and that table is about three thousand trips a day, is what the site's generating, rough, rough numbers. So the current volume's thirty-eight thousand cars a day. What I want to make sure nobody has the understanding of is that three thousand is added to the thirty-eight thousand, because the three thousand cars a day, some of that's going north, some of it's going south. So not all three thousand is going in the same direction, so you can't add three thousand plus thirty-eight thousand to get forty-one, that's, that's not how it works. So if half of the traffic from our site goes north, you're adding fifteen hundred to the thirty-eight thousand, if that makes sense, and the other half is going south, so you add the other fifteen hundred to thirty-eight thousand, and that's to the south. So the net impact on the road is not three thousand plus thirty-eight. So one other thing I thought I would say real quick is that, you know, when you, you know, if you talk about the density and, and how these higher-density areas are proposed along the bypass, um, it's kind of interesting that we're adding more traffic to a, a road as opposed to bypass traffic, um, and help relieve traffic, so we're just moving all the traffic to the new road. I think this is a perfect spot to add, add density. When the bypass is kind of built and it takes a lot of the through-traffic away, this is where you want to have more density. It's going to be slower speeds, um, this is going to be the perfect spot to add, add density along, along the existing road and not, um, not as much so along the, the bypass, where you're, you're building that to take the traffic off, and then, you know, if you plan to add all the density around it, you're just going to clog it, clog it up too. So thi- this is the spot to add, add traffic, you know, where we're, where we have it now. So there, there's just the main points I want to make about the, about the traffic impacts of the development.
All right, thank you.
And that is it for the applicants, unless you have questions. I probably can't answer them, but I've got the folks that can.
All right, do we have any questions for the applicant at this time?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
This traffic study. The traffic study, it says between Eden Lane and Union Bethel. And he was saying that half of them's going north, half of them's going south, but if you go north or south, you get a lot more, we're already at a hundred percent on both ways, so you're not just adding traffic to between Eden Lane and Bethel, uh, Union Bethel Road, you're adding traffic to people going to Wimerton or people going to Jacksonville, you're adding traffic to both, both areas.
Right, so it seems like-
It's kind of misleading to say, hey, this is it, that, that, because this is just this one little section of the road that is over-congested now.
Yes, sir, and it seems like it'll burden, burden things even more in both directions now.
Okay, I just want to make sure-
At least by fifteen hundred trips per, in each direction.
I just wanted to make sure I understood what we were talking about here.
And we have a traffic engineer that is happy to speak to this.
Again, another thing that's often misunderstood is, and let me go, I don't remember where the plan is in here, but if you recall on the plan, the, this commercial component is, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry. The commercial component of the project is inside the site a little ways, right? It's not sitting right on seventeen. So what that is sort of setting up for is that it's not going to be that heavy, you know, regional type of user where somebody's driving all the way in from miles away to come to this site, it's not set up for that. The commercial property, one thing that commercial property does not get credit for is the fact that people are not driving as far to another use, right? So they, if you're, we had coffee shop in here, so you're not driving now further to an existing coffee shop, it is designed to capture the traffic really close by the site, and we don't get credit for that in the traffic studies, and that's okay, but the, the commercial component of this is really designed to capture traffic that is closer by this project and is currently driving longer distances to get to those same uses. That's what it's designed for. The fact that it's not sitting right on, right on seventeen tells you it's not a, not going to be a major regional kind of traffic generator, this is going to be something that's really serving the, uh, the folks, customers nearby, the sites, it's not going to, you're right, there will be some traffic, you know, going both ways, but those are folks, and are capturing folks coming to that, the commercial area that is now traveling longer distances on seventeen to get to those same uses. So it's really, you know, it's really, um, it's really designed to, to decrease traffic that's already going in longer, longer, making longer trips on seventeen.
I have a question for you, sir. Do you know what month in twenty-twenty-three that that, um, traffic study was done?
Uh, which traffic study?
The, the one that, uh, that's published in the, uh, presentation.
Oh, is it the traffic count?
Yes.
The traffic count that, um, the traffic count, I believe that you're referring to, at the, okay.
Yeah, right there, it says, uh, W M P O right-of-way capacities, twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah, so what, um, what, what that is, it's a, the, the A A D T stands for, um, annualized average daily traffic, so that sort of takes into account, whenever the data's collected, it sort of normalizes that over, over the year, so it's sort of a, it's, it's an average over, over the year, so it takes out, you know, some fluctuation where a traffic count may be really low one day, or incredibly high one day for some reason, um, it takes that out and really normalizes it down, so it doesn't really, doesn't, I say it doesn't matter, but it's not as important when the actual data was collected, it really normalizes that.
So what you're saying is it's, it is an average, so on January one, now I'm just hypothetically, it says your volume is, on average, is thirty-eight thousand, so let's say maybe on January one, it's only thirty-five thousand, and on December the thirty-first, it could be, um, thirty-five, oh, six, three, so it could be forty-one thousand. But there's no way to tell it, because all you're going by is an average for the year. So, and now we are, we are nine months into twenty-twenty-four, so the, uh, it could, the traffic could be a lot heavier now. There's a lot more building going on, uh, condos, apartment buildings, and so forth, so, um, are we taking that into consideration?
It, it will be taken into consideration in the traffic study, because it will, we do have to assume a growth of traffic, um, so we'll, so we'll take traffic counts now, you know, in, in twenty-twenty-four, current traffic counts, and then in the traffic study that, that we're working on with D O T, we will have to project that into the future to, you know, to account for that. So, yeah, you're right, it will be, and is taken into account.
Okay, because, because, uh, I'm asking a question, uh, no, uh, when I, when I finish with my line of questions. So you, the, now the traffic could be different on school days than it could be, say, on summer vacation days, um, because, you know, once, once school starts back up, a lot more people are moving in the morning. And another thing that you might consider too, if you have a restaurant, um, even though I know it's not out on, on seventeen, but you do- but you do have uh businesses like DoorDash that serve, you know, and that can add to the traffic as well. Uh I was wondering if you had taken that into consideration.
Well, what what will actually happen when we take some of those things into consideration is the traffic numbers that you see on the screen will go down a little bit. So when when the final, when the final numbers are approved by DOT, the traffic counts you see in table five especially will be a little lower. Because the other thing that it, the other thing that this table doesn't show the the full picture yet is that some of the customers for the coffee shop, probably quite a few of those, are going to walk over from the um multifamily units. Um so those, you know, so right now, those trips do not take any of that into account. So again, the traffic study is really set up to be more conservative with higher trips. So we're sending more cars to the street system than is actually going to happen. It's, but that's, again, that's done by design to make sure that any improvements that are identified are designed for longer lengths and and bigger than they actually, we expect them to need to be. So but again, and and that's fine, that's the way it, that's the way the traffic studies are done. But what I'm saying is there's, like I was saying earlier with this commercial, yeah, there'll be DoorDash and folks who will come in and get get that. But there'll also be folks who will walk to those um restaurants or coffee shops from these these apartments. Um and and that's not taken into account. The other, typically for retail uses like this, there's about anywhere from a quarter of the twenty-five percent to half of the trips actually come from traffic that's already on seventeen. And again, they're shorter trips, they're coming, stopping in on their way, you know, home or wait on on the way to work. So that's that's not reflected there either. So out of that three thousand trips, uh and half of that is commercial, a chunk of that commercial traffic's already on the road. It's not new new traffic. So again, the traffic's, you know, we can talk numbers all day, but I want to make sure that those things are taken into account as well. That this is, the type of use this is, is going to um actually be a a benefit in a lot of ways for traffic further up and down from the site. And the the traffic numbers you mentioned about the school days and or summer days, that is true. On a Friday or Saturday or Sunday or beach season, the traffic's going to be high. I don't know that it's higher than thirty eight thousand, but it may be really high on those days. But at the same time, this particular, um on the, especially on the weekends, the residential component of this is generating a lot less traffic than what we show. So it's, it it all, everything kind of, you know, balances itself out to where um, you know, I feel very confident to tell you, to tell you that this is not going to going to cause traffic to increase to exceed the capacity of of seventeen. So I I'm very confident of that.
Okay.
Let me just clarify two things.
Um Mr. Cleanseal.
Yes, sir.
I was going to ask the board if they had any more questions for the traffic engineer, and then I'll get right to you, sir.
I was answering the que, there's a traffic question. I was just going to finish the que, the question that you asked him, if that's all right.
Sure, go right ahead.
I guess the, I guess I'm confused is that the thirty eight thousand number, if I'm right, is given from the MPO, that's the latest number on this road. So we didn't, we didn't make, we didn't, this is, it's not the developer's number. This is the Wilmington MPO's number. And the second que, the second, if I'm right, and I'm not, is on the traffic study, we have to do the counts based on the worst case, which is when school's in. And so we, our numbers, we're not basing our numbers on the thirty eight thousand. We're only basing it on that to show where the road capacity is. And we do the traffic counts based on what the DOT considers, which is when the schools are in. We can't do the counts without the schools being in. So I just want to make sure understood that it is an average, but this is what the MPO uses for their capacity of their roads. And I would just, I mean, if someone wants to question that, then they need to question the MPO. Thank you.
Are there any more questions for the traffic engineer? All right, thank you. Do we have any more questions for staff?
So right now, by right, they could put in thirty seven units, right?
By right, they could do up to seventy or so.
Okay.
If they did low impact development, design, had water in the sewer. Yes, sir.
Um seventy, in the seventies.
Seventy would be a high estimate, but yeah, seventy units I think would be fair.
But we're talking about two hundred and forty.
Correct, which is a bit higher than that.
It's a big difference.
Yes, sir.
Uh Mr. Adams, I have a question. Uh Mr. Potter made a statement that if we change the zoning, then we are amending the comp plan. Can you elaborate on that?
Yes, sir, so uh state statute dictates that when a rezoning is approved that is inconsistent with the future land use map, it updates the future land use map to reflect the new zoning classification. So for example, if there was a piece of property that was zoned residential performance on Highway seventeen and it was rezoned to general business, the future land use map might be changed to neighborhood mixed use.
You're talk, are you talking about just that one piece of property or that whole area?
Just the property.
Okay.
So it's, so what you're saying is the adjoining pieces of property um wouldn't be changed unless they come before us?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any question? Okay. All right, do we have any more questions for staff? Do we have any questions amongst ourselves?
I believe there's some signups.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I I wasn't going to interrupt you, but yes, we do have sign up.
Okay. Go right ahead, yes.
Robert Freeman.
Thank you, Justin.
Yes, sir, thanks.
Please state your name and your address.
First name is Robert, last name Freeman. The address is two zero four zero zero U.S. Highway seventeen North. And I was just curious if that piece of, of that parcel was included in the rezoning that was going to maybe take place. I just was wondering um if you're going to decide on that tonight or?
Which parcel are you referencing? The address you gave us?
Yes.
The little triangular piece in the front between?
Correct.
My understanding would not be part of the conditional rezoning, is that correct? So no.
That's correct.
I'm sure, yeah.
Just to clarify, the application was just for the two parcels shown on the screen. Your parcel was not included in that application.
So would you have to do that separately or to be called included or? So what would happen, it would stay what, residential?
It's zone RP, correct? Your property's zone, so that's residential performance, which is a single family zoning classification. Uh and yes, which is, you know, consistent with what-
But I was just thinking, you know, with all this going on around that piece of real estate, that something should be included there, you know, with all of, how am I supposed to live here with all this going on? You know, I'm just curious.
You, we'd be happy to um speak with you in the morning or after the meeting. I'm not sure the planning board can address the specific questions that you're asking. That would probably be better suited for staff.
Hmm, okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Mr. Freeman.
Edward Redman.
I don't have anything to add.
All right, thank you.
Uh Shayla Corf.
Okay, here we go again. My name is Shayla Corf, I live at one sixteen Center Drive. Um my comments are exactly the same as the others and I am asking that this property and the builder and developers be held to their buy right and zoning, rezoning be denied. Regardless of what the traffic says and regardless of what their engineers say, good evening Surf City families. Due to a high population of students in certain areas, we are reaching out to ask for help for transportation while we work on finding a permanent solution. If possible, please provide transportation for your students who ride bus two fifty-eight and two thirty-six until we can secure more adequate transportation for these areas. Today, Surf City Middle, good evening Surf City Sharks. Bus two twenty-three will be twenty to thirty minutes late on both Thursday and Friday morning. Also, bus two thirty will be thirty minutes late on both Thursday and Friday afternoons. Surf City Elementary, good evening Surf City families, and it is the same. So it doesn't matter where these properties are being rezoned and trying to go up. The situation for our schools remains the same. So I please request that you deny this rezoning as well and allow the builder to develop by right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Edens.
Good evening, my name's Steve Edens, I live at four thirty-eight Eden's Lane. I was uh born and raised here, lived all my seventy-three years here. And I, Hampstead was a beautiful, desirable place to live when I was growing up and up until a few years ago. It's quickly becoming one of the least desirable. I agree with just about everything most of the public's had to say. These fifteen hundred cars that they're talking about is going to go north and south. All fifteen hundred of them that leave that place, plus everybody that's coming from Ridgewater Landing and everybody on Eden's Lane is going to have to go to Union Bethel Road and stop and wait for traffic coming over here to Broadside to get back to Wilmington. As far as schools go, Ridgewater Landing, one bus load comes there and unloads to that place with one-third of the dwellings that you're talking about. One whole bus minus my grandson and two other kids, an entire bus from Surf City School. You telling me that two hundred and forty dwellings are going to increase by point three cut children? Ain't no way. Anybody with any common sense knows that. This is just, this area is beginning to get totally unlivable. We can't hardly get on the highway now, much less when you add fifteen hundred more cars. And everything else around here, there's several thousand that you're talking about. People don't realize that we're jammed in here between Holly Shell Reserve and the coast. There ain't never going to be another way to get out of here except for that bypass, if and when it ever gets done. It's time for people to wake up. This area is not cut out for all this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Aaron Schmidt. That's all the signups, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thurman. Do we have any questions, any more questions for staff at this time? I think we're good. Do we have any questions for the applicant at this time? All right, that would be negative. All right, I'm entertaining a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to deny. Based upon objective four point six, the proposal was found to be inconsistent with the following policies. Objective four point six, policy five point one point C, policy five point one point H, policy five point one point I, policy five point one point V, and policy five point one point E. I think four times the amount, three and a half times the amount of development in that one area is just too much, too much for traffic, too much for schools and not in the best interest.
I'll second that motion.
All right. All in favor for denial? Aye. Any opposed for denial? Any abstained? All right, thank you. Your request has been denied. Now, Mr. Adams, does this still come before the com, Board of Commissioners?
Yes, sir, members of the audience, this case will also be heard at the October twenty-first Board of Commissioners meeting in Bergall at seven P.M.
All right, thank you.
I'm going to try and be succinct because we've been here a long time. Alrighty, so I'm here to present case rezon two thousand twenty-four seventy-four. Um this is a general use rezoning. Wanda B. Wells, applicant, she's a commercial real estate agent. On behalf of Carlos Moore, Tanya Moore, and Danielle Bradley, owners are requesting the approval of a general use zoning map amendment to rezone two parcels of land totaling approximately one point two eight acres, they're each point six four acres, from the RP Residential Performance zoning district to the GB General Business zoning district. So this is the vicinity map, and there's a few things I want to point out because if you've driven down that road recently, it should look a little bit different. In a few years, there's a lot of development going on. So we have a current application right now for Scotts Hill Commercial right here. That could be a restaurant, a gym, a medical office, retail. Um over here, there are several developments. This is going to be a veterinarian office, this is a commercial development with a restaurant. This is going to be specialty use contractors, a gym, a roofing company. And I'm expecting an application on these parcels right here for more retail and more specialty use contracting. And this is the Topsoil Montessori School. There's also a church back here and another church over here on Brown Town Road. So here's the zoning for the subject properties, they're both RP. Um there's IT around it, there's GP that directly abuts it, there's O and I where that church is, and there's a little bit of RA in the back, and there's um a significant amount of PD across the street. All right, so here's the aerial, oh, sorry. So about this time last year, you guys heard another rezoning case, and it's the um parcel that abuts to the north. Um and it was a similar case, so they were RP and they wanted to go to GB. It was a general use rezoning, and that was approved. This is the aerial, so the parcels are are wooded. Um there's no homes or anything on either parcel right now. And as you can see, there are some existing businesses. This is like a shed metal building type dealer. So here's some photos of the site, um as you can see, it's wooded. Um this is Christian Chapel Road, and then this is the church at the end of the street, and then this is where it intersects with Brown Town Road. All right, so general business land uses. There's um one by right residential use in the GB and one by SUP. There's eighty-three by right commercial uses in the GB and fifteen by special use permit. And then there's the standard GB setbacks. Traffic, um these are from the WMPO, or they provided me these, um between U.S. Highway seventeen and the terminus of uh Christian Chapel Road. So it kind of goes to a cul-de-sac where that um church is at the end of the road. Um it's a planning capacity of two thousand. Right now, they're experiencing about two hundred and twenty-nine trips, so it's about eleven percent um capacity, traffic capacity. All right, so here's the feature land use plan map. Um majority of this area is neighborhood mixed use. The neighborhood mixed use category is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that provide services, entertainment, and amenities to residents within a three-mile radius. Um desired uses are commercial and retail, office, and then single-family dwellings. And appropriate uses would be um- Inappropriate uses would be, um, establishments that have parking in excess of twenty thousand square feet, low-density residential, industrial, and storage facilities. Staff is recommending approval, um, the proposal is consistent with the neighborhood mixed use future land use category, the proposal is compatible with the uses in the surrounding area, and the proposal is supported by four policies in the comprehensive land use plan. All right, and here's the consistency statement for approval and denial. Sorry, that was really quick, if you want me to go back, I can't.
No, that's, that's fine, um, if you can go back, um, to the slide that shows, uh, where the, the church is located.
Yeah.
Um, I believe that you said it was listed as O I, that?
Mm-hmm, it's O and I, so it's towards the back here.
Right there.
Mm-hmm, it's back here.
Okay, and that, the church, yes, the church, okay, and that church uses Christian Chapel Road, um, or is there any concern about, um, what kind of establishments that can be put, um, that close to a church?
I don't think that we have any specific ordinances that say what uses could be within a certain distance of a religious establishment.
I think the only restriction we may have would be for like adult businesses. We, that's a typical restriction on those kind of thing, one, it's got a, a heavy industry, uh, and, or industrial, anyway, and you usually, there's a fifteen hundred is standard, I'd have to go back and check ours, and I used to do quite a bit of shutting those kind of businesses down, so that was a standard, was fifteen hundred feet from a school, a church, a daycare center, uh, some other similar type, uh, uses, uh, that you would have differences, but not just general business type of?
Okay, so, I will, I mean, so, that's covered?
Yes, sir.
So, okay, I just wanted to make sure we?
Yeah, there's two, there's another one, see that little bit of blue right here, there's another one right here.
Can you point to it?
Right here, it's just above the scale.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay, I, I see it, gotcha.
What is currently on the GB, is that, is this a use?
Um, so that's vacant, um, it's owned by, to my understanding, it's owned by the same man who has that IT property, his name was Roland Dixon, and he had it rezoned last year, and this IT property is where that shed metal building type dealer is, it has a lot of those kinds of buildings out in the front.
Okay. All right. I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
About potential uses, I just try to trust the public in the private sector that if this is rezoned, we're, we're cutting some red tape, the conditional to allow, and encourage businesses to take advantage of Hampstead in this area. And, uh, with the current pattern, which you're saying, applications, it sounds like they're very complimentary of the area, um, certainly there's a risk. You might have a vape shop or something like that. So I'm in, I'm in favor.
Uh, does the applicant have a presentation?
Ms. Wanda could not make it tonight.
Okay.
But she did write up a nice little statement that I can hand out, where I can read it.
There are no sign-ups, Mr. Chairman.
There are?
There are none.
No sign-ups. Um, if you can, if you can read it to us, that would be, that would be great, give her the opportunity.
Yeah, um, the Bradley and Moore families own prime land along Highway seventeen in Hampstead. As the area around them has grown, they've recognized the increased demand for commercial opportunities along this bustling corridor. While they aren't developers themselves and don't have a specific business plan in mind, they see the potential for their properties to come, to become an attractive location for future business endeavors. Currently zoned is RP, residential performance, their land is limited in its potential uses. By rezoning their property to GB, general business, the Bradleys and Moores aim to open the door to a wider array of commercial possibilities, making their land more appealing to potential buyers. They are not seeking a conditional use rezoning because they do not have a specific use in mind. However, the families believe this rezoning would enhance the markability of their property, allowing future owners to explore diverse business opportunities that align with the growth and needs of the Hampstead community. For the Bradleys and the Moores, this rezoning represents a strategic decision to position their land in a way that benefits not just their families, but also the future development of the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff? Okay, I'm entertaining, um, a motion.
I'll make a?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a, you want me to make the motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to approve. Uh, the zoning map amendment, I read this correctly, no, yes. And make the, let me start over, I apologize. I'll make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies and objectives in the Pender two point O comprehensive land use plan, five one C, five one D, five one E, five one K.
All right, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
All righty, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
None.
And none abstained, all right. The motion has been approved. All right, Mr. Adams.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, um, next meeting, October first. Excuse me.
Next meeting is Monday.
Oh, yes, sir, you're correct, um, next meeting, Monday.
Well, you, what would you do without this?
In Burgal. The following meeting will be Tuesday, October first.
All righty.
Also in Burgal, but we'll look forward to seeing everyone, will everyone be there on Monday?
Okay.
Yep.
All right, any more questions for staff, I don't think so, um, I am entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?